Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being with us. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a virtual manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. We will take attendance for the record when I call your name. Please state that you are present. Artie Crocker.
Present.
Natasha Spada.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
And our staff, Lee Newman.
Present.
And Alex Plea.
Present.
Excellent. We note that Paul is absent tonight. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov. We have a fairly short agenda, but that doesn't mean that we'll necessarily complete it in a short period of time, although let's hope that I might. The first item on our agenda is to finalize our climate action zoning for solar installations. And in a moment, Lee will walk us through the zoning framework and a comparison between where the state recommend, what the state recommends through Dewar and what we're contemplating for Needham. But first, I just want to be clear and have some sense of consensus on what we're agreeing to regulate at this time and and whether we can advance and how we can advance anything through town meetings. So just very quickly, what we are all agreeing to regulate are three applications. One is roof-mounted solar panels. Two are ground-mounted solar systems in two sizes. A, small scale and B, medium scale. We already have in our zoning bylaw regulation by special permit for a large-scale ground-mounted. So we've got ground-mounted and we've got roof-mounted. And then the third are solar canopies over parking lots and solar canopies over parking garages. We all agree on that for a moment? Is that right?
Unless the building mounting is separate from the roof-mounted, which it sounds like it may be, building mounted versus roof-mounted.
So what we're not going to regulate at this time are pole-mounted solar arrays and building-mounted solar canopies. So where you'd have a solar canopy over a parking lot, it would be a solar canopy over a building. So Artie, are you last time you advocated for polar-mounted and for building-mounted solar canopies? Are you okay if we move forward?
I'm okay if we move forward without the pole mounted. It's just the same thing as a ground-mounted.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, because a pole-mounted system has the system mounted on a pole, Artie.
And the ground-mounted system is on the ground, just as a pole-mounted system is. So technically, they have to abide by the same standards as a ground-mounted system, lock, coverage, setbacks, everything. So a ground-mounted system is technically on many poles. We're a pole, we're in one pole. So it could be seen. We thank you, Adam, for letting me finish. We don't have to say anything about pole-mounted because if someone wants to do it, it'll just fit into the same constraints as a ground-mounted system. So we don't even have to mention it.
I'm gonna come back down, I'm gonna come back to pole-mounted. But what about building-mounted?
Uh, no. I know you were trying to shut that off in my conversation last time, and it sounds like you're trying to shut it off now. So, no, yes, you were. So no, I feel we need to include it in the conversation we have going forward. I know you don't want to, but we should include in the conversations we have going forward. So when we take it to public conversations, we can at least talk about it.
So what I'd like to do at this time, Jean, you had a comment? You had your hand up, Jean, a second ago.
You said we're not going to regulate building-mounted, but it's the the materials that have been provided to us have all kinds of regulations regarding building-mounted.
I appreciate the clarification. I'm not talking about building-integrated solar because that's
No, I know.
But I'm talking about, I'm talking about a canopy over a building.
I'd like to stop this for a second. You're saying what we're trying to do versus having a conversation.
Artie, I'm gonna continue with Jean. She had a question, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna try and get clarity for Jean, and I'll come back to you.
Well, there are two things. You said that we're not going to consider building-mounted, but there are regulations for building-mounted in materials.
I don't mean roof-mounted. I mean a canopy.
I'm looking at page three, item four, height for building-mounted solar energy systems in all districts. Then it goes on to talk about
Sorry, Jean, are you on the memo?
I'm on the memo with the revisions of November 27. And also, you said solar canopies above parking areas, and I understand that, of course. But you also said we're going to be allowing solar canopies above parking garages. Well, isn't that a building-mounted solar canopy?
So I appreciate the questions, and I'll come back to you. I understand. We'll get the clarity. And Natasha, I see your hands up. I'll come to you in a minute, but I would just want to get resolution here first. So more specifically, where where you're talking about, where are you talking about building-mounted in the memo? You said page four, but on what section?
Oh, I was just looking at item four, page three.
On page three, okay.
Height for building-mounted solar energy systems.
I got it. So I'm making a distinction between a roof-mounted system, because that is when you're mounting a solar array system, like Artie does on houses. It would be something similar on a commercial building or in a multifamily building. You're mounting solar panels, you know, directly on the roof. But that's different than a canopy over, like the mechanicals that make, so if we have a 15-foot mechanical height allowance in our zoning bylaw right now above the height of a building. And then you had another 10 feet on top of that, your mechanical height might be 10 or 15 feet, and depending on the pitch. So that would be a canopy over the mechanicals or a canopy over the roof. And that would be, the canopy legs would be mounted into the roof structure. I'm distinguishing between that and a solar canopy over a parking garage where each of the four legs are obviously mounted into the ground in some fashion. Or a solar canopy over a parking garage. And I don't know if we define garages as buildings or structures, but ultimately, yes, it's true. Like, if you look at what we allowed for for the Boston Properties project right off the highway, that's a solar canopy that's mounted on the parking structure. But it's not a building that is running water and heat.
I didn't see that distinction really clarified in what's proposed here, but you're saying, just to set the framework, that we are going to allow solar canopies on the tops of parking garages, but we are not going to allow solar canopies on the tops of any other buildings.
Not at this time. We're not going to regulate it at this time.
Mr. Chair, that is your opinion.
So I understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, you're right.
This is a group discussion. You are here
I'll come back to you, Artie.
No, you are here dictating.
Natasha had her hand up.
No, but you're dictating what you want to do. This is a group discussion, what we want.
I understand what a group is. I'm gonna go back to Natasha.
I think, Adam, it would be good. We're getting into the weeds before, I think it would be good for Lee to explain what she did, because my understanding
I agree.
Is that she went through and took the all of the, what has been already designed by the Department of Energy and Resources, DOE-R. Then she highlighted the areas where she thought that there were some changes or discrepancy based on her research on all of the different towns, you know, that are around us. So I think it would be great if she could just go through and
We'll do that, Natasha.
Let me just, there's the gray highlights and the yellow highlights, and then we should go over it with her. Thank you.
I agree. I want to get there too. But I want to make sure that we're clear, and right now we're not, on what we're regulating. What you're talking about are the details.
No, no, I think Lee should say what she did, like, explain what she did, because Jean is going into the details. I think Lee should be given overview of what she did, and then we can go over the details that she needs for us to regulate, and then Jean can bring up the ones that she didn't see that were highlighted.
Lee, why don't you go ahead then?
Okay, so let's just basically start with a memo that I put together. I tried to take the zoning bylaw and break it up and basically take the policy approach and break it up into components. So the first component that is kind of in the memo are the definitions of the terms that would potentially be regulated. And so maybe, Alex, you can are you pulling it up on the screen? So I think you see all the terms that are listed there, and essentially what I did here was I followed the definitions that were part of the draft zoning article that DOE-R had put together, which meant that I included a definition for solar that was roof-mounted, solar that was ground-mounted, small-scale solar, medium-scale solar, and basically an active solar system and a passive solar system. And I used the definitions that the state had recommended, and a number of towns have used those definitions. They've modified them in some cases by, for example, causing a smaller threshold introduction for small scale at 1,500 as opposed to the 1,750 we chose. But I went with the state model. But then I did add some other terms. One of the terms we're talking about, which we may not want to regulate, was building-mounted. I added in solar parking canopy and solar energy system, building-integrated photovoltaic system and solar energy system as additional items to regulate.
Lee, this is on page two, right?
So this is basically on page two. So there's been a lot of, so I added the, you know, definition, a new definition for solar energy system, which I don't think is really a conflicting policy question maybe you're concerned about. But I did add building-mounted, and maybe we don't want to include that. I know there's conversation about that. I did add solar parking canopy that was not part of the state's model. And I did add the building-integrated and the solar energy system, just because I wanted to define those last two terms and indicate that they would need to conform with the requirements of the zoning bylaw and that they would also, in terms of the the surface-mounted system, that they would need to meet the stormwater bylaw for the town. So that's why I added those two terms. So do you want to
Do you want to go through all of them, or do you want to do one at a time, Adam?
Well, I think I think what makes sense, like, we've, you know, we've talked about a solar, for instance, a solar parking canopy. And now I'm turning to the actual zoning amendment that Lee has prepared, page one, item one, one F, and I'll come back to one D and E in a minute, but for F is a solar canopy, a special application of a ground-mounted solar energy system that is installed on top of a parking surface or paved surface that maintains the function of the area beneath the canopy. So Lee, do you want to explain if that captures a parking garage?
I think it should be broad. I think I would probably modify that definition to make it clear that it covers both.
Okay, so I think, does everyone agree with that? I do. Natasha, do you? Artie, do you?
Fine, sounds fine.
And Jean, do you?
Could you explain why you think it's appropriate to allow them on top of parking garages but not on top of other buildings? Just so I understand why we're doing it.
So so a few things. First of all, there's no market demand right now for a canopy over a building, an office building or a school building. There's no one at TPW that's asking for it. There's no one from Public Works that's asking for it. There's no one in the, you know, any of the commercial landlords are asking, when they're mounting solar panels, they're doing it within the, within the roof itself. They're not asking for another 10 feet or 15 feet on top of the roof to create, you know, to create these panels as a canopy over the building. And we'd certainly, and it would take a little more research to understand the impacts. You know, in order to pursue that, but there's no market demand. The, you know, MAPC is not asking for it. Our own town climate action committee is not calling for it or asking for it. No government department within Needham is asking for it or the state. And and I think the simplest thing to do is in order to get a really good zoning package through that people can easily understand and digest, where we can understand what the implications are and the impacts and any mitigation that's necessary that we're all able to explain at town meeting, then I think we go forward with our best zoning and later, as things evolve, you know, if there's demand for, and even if there's not demand for, if we want to be more proactive at a later date to deal with a building-mounted solar canopy, then we'll do that at that time, but I don't see a need to do that today.
So if I could just follow up, could you explain the argument for allowing it over, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I just want to understand, for allowing solar canopies on the roof of parking garages?
So I could understand a circumstance of allowing a solar canopy over a building structure where the available roof area is not sufficient enough to generate electricity from a regular roof-mounted solar system?
Because it's it's a garage, so obviously the cars
Nothing to do with the garage. We're allowing a canopy over a garage. Think of, think of a canopy over Pollard School or a canopy over a canopy over you know, the TripAdvisor building or a canopy over what we've already seen for the new Muzzy Development or a canopy that's over the new development that we're effectively approving at the medical office building on Highland Avenue or on top of the church, one of the churches on Great Plain Avenue or any of the office built, like the office building on Pickering and Great Plain or the retail buildings like on top of FedEx or Loondos or solar canopy on top of the Gado Building across from Town Hall. I mean, right now, there seems to be sufficient area for those that seek solar panels to install that on the roof. Now, one question that we have to ask Lee is, you know, Lee, we have you know, a bylaw that says mechanicals, I think, that can't take up more than 25% of a roof area. Is that correct?
It varies as the function of zoning district in terms of what it is, but for one of the districts, yes, it is. It is the 25%.
So then I, so I think what we need to do is either say these are not mechanical systems, which I would disagree with because I do see these as mechanical systems. But I think we need to make exceptions in each of those districts for solar application for a roof-mounted system.
I would say that I think you should be focusing tonight on what the policy is. I can work out what sections of the bylaw have to be modified to implement the policy.
I understand that. You have a draft zoning bylaw that just doesn't incorporate that. And I think as a policy measure, we may need to understand the definitional difference. So you can go ahead to do what you're saying.
In terms of, I think if you want to have solar over a parking garage, I think probably the best way to do that is not to deal with the solar parking canopy definition, because that's dealing with ground-mounted solar over a parking I think you probably just want to keep this definition of building-mounted and just make it narrower, that it's an energy system that is structurally mounted to a a parking garage structure.
I'm disturbed by, last meeting you walked into this with a very particular intent to make sure we do not discuss or continue discussion on any type of building-mounted systems. And you're doing the same thing tonight, where it's supposed to be a discussion within the group of what we want to bring to the public to start the discussion, then we decide what we want to bring to town meeting. Now, it seems unnecessary to to stop the discourse and just censor anyone from talking about it in the public when we don't know. And the fact is that, yes, I agree that, is anyone coming to the town looking for this right now? No, the odds are they're probably, they're probably not. I don't know of any. They may or may not. But we know that they exist in the state. We know that, or maybe you don't know, but I know that as far as the coverage on a roof, if you only do it within the allowable surface area left and in that surface area, when it's mounted directly to the roof surface, you have to leave, you have to leave walkways, other pathways, setbacks from the structures. There are a lot of things you have to leave the space that doesn't have solar panels versus if you have some visionary architect or builder that wants to do something in the commercial sector that wants to do something that covers the building, they can actually generate probably twice as much energy as they could with any system mounted just to the roof. So is there a difference in percentage coverage of solar production? Absolutely. Is this something we should plan for the future? Yes, absolutely. We should give some allowance for the future for some builder that wants to come in here with some vision to stop that discourse before we can get to the public. Doesn't make any sense at all. And to come in here and basically dictate, you're saying what we're going to do versus let's discuss this, what we want to do. You know, what I want to do, Natasha wants to do, Jean wants to do, you want to do. It's what we want to do.
I'm in no way stifling conversation. We're trying to get through you know, a definitional section right now.
I know. But you're doing that and poisoning the waters.
I don't think anyone else thinks that we're poisoning the waters, but let's continue on my point. Thank you. So, Lee, I agree with you that we'll need another definition for a solar parking canopy for a garage structure. I want to turn now to to one in the the zoning bylaw that we drafted on page one, item 1D and 1E. Because this was a question, and this is a policy area for us to resolve. When we define the site, oh, Jean, go ahead.
Are you looking at the numbers? Are you looking at the table or the memo?
I'm looking at the zoning bylaw, not the table. But there is a zoning bylaw that we drafted.
There are two things, Jean. There's a memorandum, which is the last revised on the 27th, and then there is basically, I think, I think it's called Solar Energy Systems Zoning Approach?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes. Okay, that was passed out at the last, that's the same as what was passed out at the last meeting, correct? Okay, that's what we're focusing on. Okay, thank you.
Both, I think the memo and the zoning.
So so one question is one question is, well, I like to use this because you highlighted the policy areas in the language of the zoning bylaw itself.
Okay.
So then we'll go back and forth to the others as we need to. But here, we're dealing with definitions. And the question is, as we define a ground-mounted system, we are, we all agree to to remove the nameplate capacity as a characteristic in the definition. So going forward, we will delete that, yes?
Yes.
So then the question is really the size, and we're doing it by square foot. And currently, a small-scale ground-mounted system is up to 1,750 square feet. And Artie, you're looking to vary that from the Dewar system to 1,500 square feet. Is that right?
I'm perfectly fine to reduce that, because the fact is that 1,750 is is beyond any normal, any reasonably normal residential solar system. Some have, and some other town had 1,500, so I'm perfectly fine to reduce that to 1,500 square feet.
So Jean, are you okay to reduce that to 1,500?
Sure.
Natasha?
Sure, yes.
So I am too. So then Lee, will you reduce the 1,750 to 1,500?
Yeah.
And then the medium scale would be 1,000 would be more than 1,751 square feet. I'm sorry, 1,501 square feet. 1501.
No, it'd be more than 1,500.
We have more than 1,500.
1,501 is more than 1,500.
It'd be more than 1,500. Yes, I can make that change.
Okay. And then
And we're deleting these, in parentheses, equivalent to a rated nameplate. We're deleting that, right?
Correct. That's correct.
I mean, we can delete it. We cannot delete it. It's almost not going to matter. The thing is, the 40,000 square feet is likely, can likely result in a much bigger system than 250 kilowatt DC. That's all.
Maybe it makes sense to leave it for that one.
I don't want, let me just bring something up to all of you. I don't think that we should include any capacity, because we're not regulating the capacity of the system. We're regulating the size of the system. Period. And as we've talked about at our last meeting, you know, the whole point of this is as technology progresses, you can generate more capacity with smaller systems. So in other words, you might have a 1,500 system that's able to generate more than 10 kilowatts DC.
Yeah. Yeah. It's almost not going to matter. It's almost not going to matter. The odds of something like this are not great. Though, I'm just saying that, all I'm saying is that 250 kilowatt DC system now is likely more like 30,000 square feet. I'm not saying we reduce to 30. I'm saying if we keep it at 40,000 square feet and/or no gridland 250 kilowatt DC. But what have you guys want to do? It almost doesn't matter. So whatever gets us through, this one is perfectly fine.
The way I see it, Artie, I don't as technology advances, that nameplate's going to change. I don't want to have to go through every few years to update the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or to be constrained. It doesn't, we're not regulating capacity. We resolved that last
Yeah, that's fine.
So we'll remove that. So So. That, um. So that kind of takes care of the definitions.
So the next would be in my memo, um, what the land use regulations would be. Um, and so going forward with the definitions that we've talked about. Um, roof mounted solar energy systems, um. Um, under, um, the way it's drafted now, um, would be permitted in all, um, districts as of right across the town. Um, this is consistent, um, with the DOER model. Um, in residential districts, um, small scale ground mounted systems and solar parking canopies. Um, would be permitted as of right in the rear and the side yards. Um, that is consistent with the DOER model. Um, and ground mounted solar energy systems would be permitted subject to site plan review, um, by the special permit granting authority. That too is consistent with the DOER model in terms of how they're suggesting the land use, um, be regulated. Um, in non-residential districts, um, small scale ground mounted would also be permitted as of right. Um, in the rear and the side yards. Um, and this is where, um, and that's consistent with the DOER model, but I did deviate, um, on the medium scale, um. Ground mounted systems and the solar parking canopies. Um, I required that they, um, be permitted by special permit, by through a site plan approval.
Site plan review.
Site plan, site plan review even in the non-residential district. So that, um, deviates from what DOER did in terms of their land use profile, so it agrees with.
And what's the, what's the rationale for that?
Also, because you can have these larger systems, and I felt that it was appropriate to have a site plan approval for those and not just to, to allow them as of right. Irrespective of whether it was in a residential district or a non-residential district, if they could cover up to an acre in area.
That makes sense. Natasha or Jean or Artie, do you have any comments on any of that, or do you agree with that?
I, I, I just have a, have a question of focusing on the, what's on the screen now and highlighted in yellow. Um, it says that the draft zoning deviates from the DOER by requiring site plan review. For all medium scale ground mounted installations in non-residential districts as well as. Something required in residential districts as well as. What's the word those refer to as well as?
I say except that, I mean.
So.
I, I think I said, I. What did I say here? The draft only deviates from the DOER amount of requiring, by requiring site plan review for all medium ground scan to monitor installations in non-residence.
As well as.
You mean.
Ground mounted installations in resident, in residential.
I meant to say, wha- what I was trying to say there was that it's, it's the same ac- across, the only place it's deviating. Is, um, in for medium scale in, in a non-residential district. So in the, um, medium scale, um, under DOER only requires site plan approval in. The residential districts. What I've done is I've said that medium scale requires, um. Um, a, a site plan approval in all districts, and that's the distinction. I guess I, I, it's not worded very well, but that's really, that's, that's the distinction.
I understand, I think that's good policy.
Okay, that, I, I thought maybe the word those meant site plan review. As well as site plan review required in residential districts under the DOER model.
Yeah, the, the DOER requires site plan approval in residential districts, and so do we, and so do we. Um, but the distinction, the only difference between what we're doing and what DOER is, is we're saying we want site plan approval. Um, on medium sized institutions in non-residential districts as well as in residential.
Sure, sure, okay. It just needs a little clarification. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Can I discuss a quick question? The yellow is your explanation, it's not what's going into.
My, yeah, the yellow is my, basically my, was my trying to explain why, how ours differentiated from the DOER.
So.
And then, and then Natasha, when you go into the zoning bylaw that she drafted. She, that corresponds to the yellow here.
Well, no, I was, I, I, I had done the zoning earlier, and those were the.
Yes.
Policy issues I wanted you to focus on, so.
So we're really focusing on the yellow.
Well, if you're, if you're interested only in how I deviated from.
Dewar.
DOER, yes.
Right, so what we're saying is that DOER has already vetted this, that the yellow is where you deviated. Those are the ones that we should look at first, and then let you know if we have any other questions, would that be a?
Well, we also have to go through and, and resolve in, in the zoning bylaw. And give our opinion on, you know. For instance, when we're dealing with the basic requirements. That roof mounted solar system shall be permitted in all use districts. We're not looking in isolation to the memo. We're also looking at the, you know, at the bylaw that she drafted.
Right, but if we go through this memo and understand where she deviates, then we can go to the bylaw, does that make sense, or? Otherwise, we're going to be jumping around, right?
Well, we could.
I agree.
That, that, you know, that's, that's fine, but it's. We ultimately have to do that anyways, but if you want to do it that way, Natasha, I, I certainly don't object, so.
I'm just asking, Lee, is that the best way for us to address your changes?
Yeah, we, we could do that. I, I'll explain what, what, what the, what the bylaw, what, what the, what the, what DOER is allowing and how I've deviated. And then you can feel, tell me if you're comfortable with that, going through the memo. So, um, so if people are comfortable with that land use profile, the way I've described it in terms of the uses and where they're allowed. And the terms under which they're allowed. Um, I can move to the next section that it kind of, um, is regulated. Um, and that section deals with, um, block coverage. Now, DE, DOER had recommended, um, that the towns not apply their. Lot coverage or their impervious surface standards. Um, to ground mounted systems in circumstances where. Um, there was grass or some other, another kind of pervious surface underneath the structures themselves. Um, a number of towns did not make that, did not follow that recommendation. Um, and I didn't either. I felt that cut lot coverage was lot coverage. And so I basically, um, treated these as structures, and I treated them as, as being governed by the coverage and the impervious surface rules. That exists in the zoning district in which they're placed.
Yeah, I, I agree, Lee. Lee, I think maybe about one thing that might be simplify things here, and that is, if you look at three D. Three D and three B are dealing with similar, similar. Similar aspects, and if we just replace, eliminate, eliminate B and, and then put D where B is. And that'll take care of the fact that the ground coverage on the solar system is what we're regulating. We're not, we're not per se regulating the square foot of the array, we're regulating the, the lot coverage under it. So if we just.
She's not.
Yes, if we, if we just.
She's not regulating the size of the array.
If you just replace B with D, that takes care of the, that takes care of the lot, that takes care of the square foot of the array. Square foot, the, the projected, the ground mounted. Projection of the array, we don't need, I don't, we don't need the, the, D is good enough.
Well, because I think the panels could actually be larger than the surface.
Yes, exactly.
No, 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 we're dealing.
As you read it.
We're, we're dealing with lot coverage though, we're not dealing with, we're not dealing with the square foot size of the array, which is an angle. So we're dealing with lot coverage.
Artie, but, oh, so, let me explain for a second how it does relate and why they're distinct. If you have a building that has a ten by fifteen footprint, that's a hundred and fifty square feet, right? So, that, so you've got a foot, so, and if you've got a lot that's a thousand square feet. You're at a fifteen percent lot coverage there. If you have, if you have solar panels, then let's say extend another five feet. Okay? Five feet, five feet by ten feet. So instead of it being fifteen, uh, ten by fifteen. You now have another section that's an additional five by fifteen.
That's.
That incremental, what she's saying by this regulation. Is that incrementally increased amount of five by fifteen. Would be, um, uh, you know, would be included, would be added to the lot.
Yes, like, I, I, less than something I'm missing, you're saying an awful lot, which, which is.
Adam, I, I, Adam, I think maybe you're looking at paragraph C, he's talking about getting rid of paragraph B.
Yeah, I'm talking.
I know, I am too.
No, no, kid, no, the thing is this, solar, the square foot of a solar array, when you ang, when you angle it. Has a different projection on the ground. And so what we're regulating is the lot coverage. For example, just like a building, when it has a roof that's pitched, it doesn't increase the lot coverage. It's.
That's true.
And that, and that is, lot coverage is D, lot coverage is not B. So we just, we just eliminate B and make it, make, make D stand by itself, that's all I'm saying. That, that'll take care of burn coverage, lot coverage, excuse me.
I think that makes sense.
I. My understand, that's different than what you, we talked about earlier, Lee, I think.
No, we talked about building coverage, we talked about where the solar panels extended beyond the, the footprint of the building. That that extra.
So let's, so Artie, do you, do you agree with that, that?
I, 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 I'm not, I'm, I'm not agreeing with anything I'm not talking about right now. I'm talking about. We can eliminate B and just have D take its place, that's all I'm saying.
Well.
Is that?
D is, D is only dealing with ground mounted, as opposed to B is dealing with active solar energy system, which can be a bunch of different things. So I see it as a bit distinct, but more to the point.
No, no.
More to the point.
No, no, ground coverage is ground coverage. An active solar energy system block coverage is just a, it's just a ground mountain system of some sort. And so I don't, I don't see, uh, I mean, a solar canopy and parking on someone's lot, I think we're, we're dealing with that maybe separately, but. No, I don't see how B needs to be in there if we have B, if we have D, that's all.
Let, let, let me try another question then. Do you, do you agree already that? Lot coverage includes not just the footprint of the building. But if there are solar panels that exceed past a building, that those additional solar panels. That surface area would increase the lot coverage, is that correct?
Um, it depends if we're looking at, if we, depends if we, if we count them awnings. If you count awnings as part of a lot coverage, so I, in that, when I, I don't, I'm not sure whether that's in the conversation, yeah, it lines in why you bring it up. But awnings are on buildings and they don't count towards lot covers. There can be solar honors, which is serving the same purpose as an honor.
It's an interesting point, Lee, because I think an awning, if it extends past maybe. One feet or two feet, that probably does take up, that does contribute towards the lot coverage, right?
I don't. Have to go to the definition. Well, it says that portion of the lot that is covered or occupied by any building or structure.
So that would, would that be regarded as a structure, and if not, should we define it as such? Because I think that's the intent, that's ultimately what you're saying, anything that extends beyond the footprint of the building.
A solar canopy, yes. So, let's just settle on what the intent is, and then I can worry about how it's, um, how it's fixed, yes. Uh, right now, my intent, um, was to, um, indicate that if you had a solar installation on a building. And it extended beyond the footprint of the building, that that was counted toward, that additional area was counted toward coverage.
That's what I had understood, and that's what, I agree with that. Natasha? You agree with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Jean, do you agree with that?
Um, I just want to make sure that, um, we're not, uh. That we take into account that we have a definition of coverage in our zoning bylaw. And, uh, we make sure that we, um, distinguish from that definition if we need to. Or use it, or use it if that's our intention.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, it, it says that portion of a lot that is covered or occupied by any building. Or structure. So, uh, it doesn't count surface parking areas, I believe.
Right.
Um. So if we're, we want to be careful that, uh, I would say, for example, a parking lot canopy, we want it to. Be counted in lot coverage. Um, it seems like it, it would be because of the structure, right? So.
That, that's, so, I think what we're saying with that is. The part, let's say you have a parking gar, uh, parking lot, no structure. And that is ten feet by fifteen feet. Okay, so the lot coverage of that parking garage, of that parking lot is, uh, ten feet. By fifteen feet, it's a hundred and fifty square feet. If you have a canopy, that's, let's say, twenty feet by fifteen feet. You've got a footprint, you've got a lot coverage of a hundred and fifty square feet from the, um. Uh, from the. Uh, from the parking lot, plus the seventy-five square feet. Because you've got an additional five feet times fifteen feet. Um, that would be the additional amount can, uh, towards lot coverage.
Uh, but, but parking areas are not.
Well, parking areas don't count, I think.
Don't count.
What, what is?
You're talking about the, this brand new structure, and it's whole, it's total. A, area square footage will be counted in lot coverage limitations for that lot, is that what we're calling?
No, what, what this is saying is, this thing is saying two things. It's saying that if you have a system over a building and it extends beyond the building footprint, that additional area counts toward lot coverage.
Right.
In addition to the building.
In addition to the building. It says, if you have, if you put one of these installations over a parking lot. The, to the extent that this, the canopy extends beyond the parking surface. That area that extends beyond the parking surface covered, co- counts toward lot coverage. The area of the canopy that sits over the parking lot itself doesn't come, doesn't, doesn't count. But if, for example, for some reason it extends beyond the boundaries of that parking lot, then it counts toward coverage.
Ah, okay, so you're deliberately leaving out the area of the, of the pa- parking canopy that's above the parking lot. Even though parking lots are not, are not regulated in terms of lot coverage.
That's right.
So, gee, so.
Okay, I just want to understand that, uh, because I was thinking previously that anything that's a structure. A, a new structure is going to be counted in lot coverage, and that will affect, you know, whether people can build one or not.
Well, I think a solar parking canopy, though, you know, you really couldn't do that, because you're going to have a building that's probably built on that site already, right? That's meeting your lot coverage standard, and you've got a parking lot behind it. Um, so you couldn't even put one of those things up without violating your own coverage standard. So that's why the area of the canopy over the parking lot itself, I didn't count. I.
Because it would be double count, not because it's not double counting, right?
It was, I didn't want, it, it wouldn't work. I mean, if you have a, if you have a lot and you've got a fifty, fifty percent lot coverage on it. And you have a building that's sitting there right now with fifty percent lot coverage, right, sitting there, you've got a parking lot behind the building. You're, it's, you know, you can't, um, or maybe it's, maybe it's at forty-five percent. You wouldn't be able to cover the parking lot with this added structure without deviating your coverage requirement. So I was basically saying that you could put the canopy over the parking lot itself and not have it count toward coverage. Unless it extended beyond the surface area of the parking lot.
All right, all right, now I understand it, and, um, I had to think about whether that's fine. Um, but I understand the point of view and the reason for it. Okay, thank you.
So my question, Lee, then is. Should, should we actually? Part of the impact of, of the solar canopy or the solar panels is that? Part of the impact of of the solar canopy or the solar panels is that they themselves are an impervious surface, right?
Did that again?
Excuse me. Solar panels and uh solar panels. Would amount to, like we've said before, an impervious surface.
No, solar panels are ca- are counted, are counted as pervious cer- surfaces. They're not classified as impervious. They're classified as pervious.
Then why did we regulate? Boston properties. To ensure that their water. Was. Treated from those things separately from the parking structure. And how did that? Go ahead, Artie.
Well, because because it gave us, because it gave us the opportunity to do so. I mean, we had the opportunity since, I mean, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what they had in there for any type of gutters and they're collecting it. Um, but it wasn't adding to the water coverage, but it gave us the opportunity to. Basically collect it, bring it down without it going through, without it going on to that parking surface, which kept the water cleaner. Going down where wherever went down into the Cutler Lake, wherever it went. No.
Lee, do you, Lee, do you, do you and Justice and Hank see those as um? As an impervious surface?
Or pervious?
It was pervious.
Okay, and would that have any impact on stormwater management?
Well, I mean. I I I guess I really don't understand what you're asking me here at all.
If you've assisted, if you've, if you have like the part, I I just wanna understand the practical implication, bless you, of. You know, of lock coverage from the point of view of stormwater management. If you have a part, if you have a building, like a house. And you've got part of your lock, you know, you're dealing with your lock coverage, and if you've got. An accessory structure like a barn and a garage detached. And you're trying to say you don't wanna cover your land. With too many structures.
Well, they're gonna need to meet the stormwater by law provisions when they, when they put these things up in parking lots, and that's one of the requirements, so.
So do those separate by, does the stormwater management by law need to? Be altered? If stormwater is being managed differently. Like if you have those three structures on a lot. And like Artie is saying, you've got gutter systems. And maybe they go all discharged into a basin. That's one thing, but if you then add a solar canopy. You know, on top of a, on top of a a parking lot. Or a driveway. Will the water drain in the same way as it otherwise was? Or do we need to take that water, collect it, and also put it? Into a stormwater. Uh, management system.
I think what I've, what I've tried to do here is indicate that the impervious portion of ground mounted solar energy systems. Um, are subject, and I that I think I had a supplemental regulation on this, to need um um stormwater management by law. And they need to comply with that in terms of their design when they're, when they're, when they're issued building permits or site plan approval.
So we, have we checked the stormwater management by law to make sure that that's congruent?
I will do that, but I I would imagine that it is.
Okay. I I I don't know, I'm not an engineer. And I think that it's, we don't wanna set up this zoning. Like what you're saying to make it impossible by application. Um. So specifically on lot coverage. We're trying to avoid the double counting. And then we're saying that any extended amount beyond a parking. Structure, for instance, would contribute towards the lot coverage calculation.
Yes.
And that's true regardless of the application, if it's ground mounted. Or if it's a uh. Uh, you know, on a, on a mountain on a roof. Or whether it's um. Uh, a solar. Uh, canopy over a parking structure or over a parking. Lot, correct?
It's for an active solar system, which includes all those components.
So I think it was an easier way to. Then deal with that. Uh, but that Paul, I agree with that policy. Artie, you agree with that policy?
Uh, I think, yeah, no, that's, that makes perfect sense to make sure it's not double, double, double coverage, double bill, so forth. Yeah, I just verify something, Lee. Um, on the, on the three B, three D, are you saying three B? Is 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 classifying something different than three D? I mean, I mean, is three B, you're talking about something with the extended beyond the roof? Or is three?
No, three C, three C is beyond the roof.
So three, so three B and three D are talking about the exact same thing, is that correct?
Well, one's talking, one's talking about only ground mounted, and the other one's kind of picking up active solar energy. Um. Let me look at 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 those two. I I I pulled that example out of NADIC's, NADIC's by law. And before I get rid of B, um, Artie, I'd just like to have a better understanding of what NADIC was trying to get at when they, when they acquired it. So why don't I follow up with them and get back to you on that? And maybe we can, maybe we can condense it, or maybe there's something that I don't understand that they were, that they were getting at, that we're, that we're just not thinking about.
Yeah, maybe, I just, yeah, yeah. Uh, no, makes perfect sense to make certain what's going on.
And also while you're talking to them, it would be helpful, maybe if you can find out if. How they treat those things is whether they're pervious or impervious. And if it adversely affects, and if they needed to make any subsequent changes to their uh stormwater by law.
Okay.
I know, and I know in the Conservation Commission, any str- any ground mount system is treated as pervious.
That's helpful. So if you have. Is that because, for instance, Artie, if you're looking at like the only one we have in town by the dub. The what, where it's all on an angle, the water, if the solar panels were not there, it would just go on into the land. And so now that you have the solar panels, it's still going into the land ultimately. It's just going in in a different way at a different rate.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, 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 it's all still going into the land. I mean, filters between the panels, around the panels, down the panels. Because those panels are not, they're not one solid. Plane. There are slots in between all the panels, so as the rain's coming down, it's filtering between the panels. It's not all flowing down to one point at the bottom. It just filters between all the rows and columns. So, yeah, it it does it, does it slightly alter how much, where the rain hits the ground? Sure. Does it have any real effect on the penetration? Probably not any real, real. Real difference in what gets permeable.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Lee, do you wanna take us to the next one?
Yeah, so the next one deals with the height um. Um, for solar energy systems, um, I think with, I will start with um. Building mounted system not generally on the roof. Um, and or or building mounted systems um on the roof. So the state basically had recommended that you just exempt all of these, you have no requirements on them at all, and completely exempt them from your height standards. Um, I didn't feel comfortable with that, so I followed actually the approach that NADA could use. I thought it was a good one. Um, they were effectively regulating it, um, the the height above a roof based upon the pitch of the roof. Um, so when the angle, I think, was um, was uh was greater than a fifteen percent angle. Um, they allowed it, the system to extend a foot above the roof surface. And um when it had a um an angle where the, where that pitch was less than the um fifteen degrees. Um, they allowed the system to be lot, to be um, I think erected, I think up to s. To extend, I think, six feet above the surface uh of the roof on which the system is installed. Provided that it did not um extend um more than three feet above the building height. Requirement for the district.
In in other words, in each district.
Yes, in each district, that was the standard. So it it was one foot above the surface um of.
At the maximum angle.
At the, at the, at the fifteen, yeah, I think greater than fifteen percent, and then less than fifteen percent, it was. I think it was um three feet above the roof surface, uh which is installed, was the standard. But I think if it was, if the surface on which the system was mounted was below the maximum building height. Um, then the system was allowed to be six feet above the roof surface, but it could never um. Extend to be higher than three feet above the height for the district.
Just because we're, we're debating this, uh Gina, I'll come to you in one second. Uh. We already have a, what's our standard now for mechanicals? It's fifteen feet above the roof line?
Yep, fifteen feet.
So. I would think that we would.
Well, it's.
Why won't we follow that?
Well, fifteen is, fifteen feet is a lot higher than. Than than three feet above the building height for the, for the district.
Yeah, that's really high.
It's pretty high.
For which, uh, but it's a mechanical system. And if that's what it is, a trip advisor, and that's what it'll be, you know, because of the elevator shafts and so on.
Yeah, but uh, but this is for all districts unless you wanna have different standards in the residential districts versus in institutional districts versus commercial districts.
I I'd want, I'd wanna have that. Yeah, I'd wanna have different, different constraints. If we're talking about that type of elevation, elevation for solar systems, I'd want, I'd wanna differentiate between the uh. Commercial.
I think in resident, in in. Single family residential districts. I don't think we want these things to be more than a foot. Higher than the, than a roof of a house. So the maximum height of a house, I think, is thirty-five feet. Which I think is consistent in SRA and SRB, but I don't know if that's, is that true, Lee?
Yes.
So then you, so then. A solar. A solar panel system. Which on any house that I've seen, you know, is mounted right on the roof itself. So it's not like it's adding another twelve inches on top of the roof. I think that's probably sufficient and fine, even if there was something. An angle of the solar panel was different at fifteen degrees than the angle of the roof?
Yeah, to give you an idea of what happened, so I'll give you one example of something, something in Brookline, we were installing a solar system on a house. And his neighbor installed a solar system. And I think they got approval from one angle, and they tilted the thing up at a very steep angle, and it was going quite a bit above the roof surface. Or at least I think they got approval for something other. In any case, there was complaint, I think they, this, the town said they had to reduce it. It was just, it was angling up way too much. So there's a couple of things that happened with solar PV. From a structural standpoint, you don't ever really wanna do that anyway. Actually, I was thinking, actually, what they installed was a solar thermal system, that's different. But a solar PV system, you wouldn't normally angle it up like that anyway, because from a wind standpoint, it it puts a lot of pressure on the back of the panels. And it's not, it's not meant for that. So the normal, the normal system on a, on a roof, let's say a flat roof. Is a residential system is five or seven, that's what normally happens. You can have some commercial systems where they're angling it a little bit more than that, because you have, you can have actually kind of a bidirectional panel going on. Where where they're, they're going up in each direction, so you, so you maximize your solar gain on the roof. But and a foot, a foot off, a foot. At the ma- at, to add it to the maximum seems perfectly acceptable. It's not gonna be more than that, and most times it can be less than that. You have a flat roof that's at the maximum height, you put a solar system on it, the back end of the panel is maybe seven in, seven inches above the roof surface, something like that. So it's not likely ever gonna be a foot anyway.
So what would? Go ahead, Jean.
Um, I I I like the way this is presently worded. I I think this is uh being fairly conservative about what the ru- roof will look like. And naturally, if a person, if a roof doesn't have uh uh the satisfactory pitch to it. Um, they need to angle the solar panels to some extent. But I think that the three feet, it seems good, I.
Yeah, these are roof mounted also.
Yeah, why, why would we wanna make them any more pitched than three feet?
I'm not, I'm not. I'm not saying we wanna force a pitch. But there are certain conditions where it's advantageous to pitch a panel to capture more sun. And because of the pitch, it may increase a height.
I think, you know, when we go before town meetings with this, we're gonna have to have some sketches that show what we're talking about. And I think that, you know, if we can show that this, you know, already if it's relatively flat roof, they need a little pitch. We, they could add three feet, that's what that will look like. Um, I think if you start talking about much higher. Um. Above the roof line, I I don't know, I just don't think it's going to be, I think it's gonna lead to issues.
Well, for roof, for roof mounted system, period, a straight roof mounted system, not building mounted, for roof mounted systems. Language like this, or simplified, or sim- or much simpler language like this is perfectly acceptable. And 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 and. And and it's not going, like I said, I mean, any, any system is not going to be. More than, much more than a foot off anyway. Certainly residential system is never gonna be more than that.
Hey, Adam, I have a quick.
Yes.
So we spent like an hour and ten minutes on this. What's the goal? We have another fifty minutes. What do we wanna get done?
Why? I don't, I don't know what the timeline, but I um. You wanted to go through.
I wanted to go, I wanted for Lee to go through it all, and then we can decide on what, which items we can review and come back to later, but.
So we're about. So. I thought you wanted to, I I thought you wanted to understand the rationale for these distinctions.
Yes, I think we should go through them.
We are, that's what we're doing presently. And so it brings up the question.
Some of them, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we? Let, why don't we let Lee go through all of them and then? Make comments, other, otherwise we're gonna get stuck.
I was trying to get resolution on some of these things, so we come back and go line by line, we'll bang it out, but okay, let's. We'll, we'll do that. It's gonna add a lot more time, Natasha. I'm fine to do that. I've got all night.
Well, no, that I don't wanna add more time. You do it your way. It just feels like um. We're getting stuck on on. On on some things, and I feel like Lee. I don't know. Lee, what do you suggest? I don't know.
Well, I. I'd like to maybe go through it, Adam, um, and then we can focus, you know, on the zoning itself and maybe make the changes there. Maybe that's, maybe that's a better way of doing it.
It it it's fine, but I I'm, I'm happy to do that. But ultimately, Natasha, we have to give direction tonight to Lee. On every one of these items.
Lee.
From setback height.
Well, I was, I was hoping to come out of this meeting with that kind of dis- dis- you know, decision. I was hoping that we would have been able to go through this. And when you understood the changes that I made, if you had some questions, or you could just give me some direction on whether or not you want the, it changed, and I would have some. Framework to, you know, take this to the next step. Um. I mean, I think.
Otherwise, we're spinning our circles.
I think I I have direction, I think, on the, on the first part of it, I'm. Um, I I don't understand, you know, really, I felt comfortable with the height. Requirements, the way NADA could set them up, that was the best example that I thought I saw here, so. Um.
Then maybe, maybe just leave it, then maybe just leave it as is. We can always, it can always be modified later to change it down. I mean, you know, I I don't, I don't think, I don't think we have to get stuck on certain things right now. We can, we can, it can always be modified down later.
But if it mod, if we modify, if we modify it down, that means we're making it more restrictive. So here with height, I was trying to. I was, while we're talking about height, it made sense to resolve height, so then we could give. Clarity and direction to Lee on what we're, our policy is on height. But we've explained, she's explained the difference, so let's move on to a different item, and then we'll debate height later. That's fine. So we.
So that was, that essentially was the height for um building mounted systems. Um, and then so for um for ground mounted systems.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lee, that was, that was height restriction for roof mounted, not building mounted.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry, a building mounted, I think, um, across all districts, it was no greater than the highest point of the roof, which is basically. The height requirements in the underlying district. The height requirements in the underlying districts on what the roof is at that, at that height.
Which, which, which I think is where, where we're stuck at the beginning, where. Um, I, where I'm saying we should allow the conversation on building mounted in certain districts and districts in the town. Residential, um, two square, whatever it is, we should allow.
Already, we're, already, we're all, we, I, we, we have resolution already, that we're gonna allow building mounted. Solar systems in all districts. The distinction I was making earlier came from you before about a building mounted solar canopy.
Um, okay, this roof mounted, I, I, what I'm saying, okay, I'm not calling them solar canopies, I'm calling them. This roof mounted, then this building mounted, they're two different things, like Lexington, Lexington is defining something, is building mounted, a structure on a building. And so they're allowed, they're, according to their wording, they're allowing it, and they're calling building mounted, so I'm not calling it solar canopy, call it something else, but. But the roof mounted and building mounted are two different things.
So I guess, I guess what I'm talking about. If, because you're bringing this up, and well, that's fine, we can get some clarity here. So on. Where was it? In the, in page fifty-one and page fifty-two. Of our. Of our packets, what you called in an email before, I think, solar lids. That's what I'm referring to as a canopy over a building. And. We don't, we, we haven't really defined that or regulated that currently in Lee's memo and in her draft regulation. So. Actually, I'm gonna make a correction. On page fifty-two, the image on the bottom. Shows a roof mounted system on top of a building. And that height, you know, when you look at the angle of those things, we don't know what the height of that building is. But already, this is the building in the UMass. Uh, uh. Uh, like, uh, health science lab. So, um. So that's not a canopy, that's a roof mounted system. What I regard as a canopy is really the, you know, the picture above it. At the Clark, at Clark University. And, um. And the Cali, the University of California Medical Center. And, um. And this other building uh, uh, at the very, uh. Top of page fifty-one, but that to me is kind of like a solar canopy. Um. But setting aside a solar canopy, like you would have over a parking lot. Pull solar, uh, uh, fixed to a building would be allowed in, in every district. Zach, let's give a little more clarity to what I'm talking about.
Um, I'm confused, I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah, roof mount, this, I, I, Artie is right, this, what, what is being proposed here makes a distinction between roof mounted. And, um, and then ground mounted. And we say that we're not going to allow. Uh, bill can, canopies over buildings. Right?
But I'm, but I'm, but I'm saying we should allow the conversation, is the fact is, I don't know. What, I don't know what the, I don't know what the public meetings are gonna bring out of it. I have no idea what's gonna come out of public meetings when we start talking about this. I mean, from an architectural standpoint, it's pretty damn cool, from a visionary standpoint, it's pretty damn cool. Do we need, do we need something like, something like that in the future, probably go into it? Probably so. And any building, we, any building that's being built now, if they have the opportunity to do it, then they may choose to do it, if not, then, then they don't. But if we don't give them the opportunity, though, that it'll never, if we don't give them the opportunity, that building will never happen.
I think, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I think we all agree on specifically building mounted solar applications. A solar canopy that may extend, you know. High, very high, is gonna be a little bit more challenging.
Well, I, I, no, I agree, I try to, no, I totally agree, no, I completely agree. No, I completely agree with that, and that's where part of the conversation is, to define where, where, where that's going to be.
So let's put a pin in that for now, so we can get through the rest. Of the Dewar distinctions that Lee has made in our zoning. And then we'll go back to the zoning and start giving Lee direction. On what we think is best, and we have to debate each one, we will. Hopefully, we'll be able to do this in time for May town meeting, otherwise.
Well, I, I have no, I have no doubt, we can, we can, I have no doubt, we can wrap it up, make sure we have something.
Good. So Lee, you were talking a second ago. I think we dealt with height.
Height, height for basically roof mounted systems and building mounted systems. So the next category is the height for ground mounted solar energy systems. So the um, DOER model recommends that the existing zoning district height limits. Apply for all ground mounted solar energy systems. So if it were a ground mounted accessory system for a principal building. Then you'd use the maximum height that you have for accessory structures. Um, and if it was a ground mounted solar system, it would be the height of this principal structure on the lot. Um, but Needham zoning does not, does not have any established standards for accessory structures. That doesn't limit the height of, of the accessory structure. It just basically creates greater setbacks for certain types of accessory structures based on height, but it doesn't have a standard in that regard. So there was no standard for me to apply for these kind of accessory, small scale and medium scale um, ground mounted systems. So I chose, um, be, looking at some of the other towns as models, I chose a ten-foot. Vertical height from grade for the small scale and the medium scale. Um, um, for, um, for a, a solar parking canopy, um. Um, in a residential district, um. Uh, the maximum height, um, would be on the lot, would be the height of the principal structure, um.
So pause for a second. So what that means is that if the principal structure height is thirty-five feet. That you would have a solar, you could have a solar canopy over the parking lot at thirty-five feet. And so Lee and I talked about that, and we may need to make a modification, which is one of the reasons why we're gonna talk about it now.
I, I agree, yeah, I agree, that, that, that begs, begs, begs a concern in the residential area.
So, Gene, you would, your hand up?
Yeah, I, I definitely had circled this and put a big question mark, uh.
I wa- I wasn't sure what the standard should be, so I, I'm not sure what the appropriate height.
So let's say this, let's put a pin in height. It's one of the things that we have to come back and deal with anyways, so let's. Let's continue on with the next modification that you made.
Um, that, in this same section, there's, there's another provision, a number D, it's really not related to height. Even though it's in here, but it appears everywhere, and I just want at some point to a- ask about it. There's a reference to subject to site plan review by special permit granting authority. But we're not establishing any special permits that are required for this, uh, these structures, are we?
She's saying the solar, she's saying that, uh, that. You know, the site plan review is being performed effectively by the pla- planning board, because the planning board.
Why don't we say that?
Okay, that's fine.
Because special permit granting authority, for, for one thing, in our zoning bylaw, that could be the zoning board of appeals or the planning board. Although I think elsewhere in this material, we, we specify planning board. But I, I think we should, we know, we've, we got into trouble using references to special permit, uh, plan, uh, granting authority and process.
Thanks for calling that out, and, uh, Lee will make that change elsewhere.
Okay.
In all places where it comes up, uh, so then.
So the next one, the next one deals with setbacks and uh, DOER had a model recommendation for more urban towns. Um, which have generally setbacks of, um, on a rear and side of twenty feet or less, which we have. Um, and they recommended that we just go along with those, um, with those standards for our. Ground mounted systems, and so that's essentially what I did, I, I linked it in to the setback requirements for. Um, buildings as, as they exist in all the individual districts. They also recommended that, um, the solar systems not be allowed, or they be discouraged in front yards. Um, and so this draft actually doesn't allow them in a front yard at all. Um, there are some other, there are some other towns, though, that do allow them, um, by special permit in the front yard, and so. Um, for those six situations, maybe where the lot doesn't allow, doesn't allow for the system to effectively be placed in a side or a rear yard. Perhaps you wanna consider opening it up through a special permit process. But this is basically structured to require that the ground mounted systems meet the sta- the setback standards. Um, of the zoning district on which they're placed.
Yeah, no solar systems, al- almost no solar systems will ever meet the setbacks on the front yard. Only, only, if only a small percentage would meet it, but there would, there may be some cases when they couldn't be anywhere except for in the front yard. And some of those lots, some of those big lots, maybe that's where they want them or something, but they could be very large front lots where that's where the best exposure is. Either way, it, it doesn't matter to me either way, whether we do it or not. If we, if we're gonna do it, it would have to be by special permit. I don't want people to be scared off thinking that the solar system is gonna be, you know. Flowing down the streets in everyone's front yards, that could never happen.
I agree with Artie, it should be by special permit.
I'm not, I, I think that the, your intent was to prohibit. Solar in the front, right?
That's how it's drafted, but um, I think that allowing it by special permit would make sense for those, you know, to have, you know, of, of. A vehicle for people to do it in those limited situations when it's appropriate.
So we'd have to figure out what the special permit criteria are. Because, and remember, we don't, you know, it's not that, while it's discretionary. It, you know, are we making it discretionary by use, or are we making it discretionary? You know, by these other criteria, because if they meet the criteria, then there's no reason why I, I couldn't have it on mine. And my neighbors couldn't have it on theirs.
I would make it discretionary, because I, I think that you're allowing it in the rear and the side yard, so it would need to be discretionary.
Yeah, it would still have, any, any, any structure has to be ten feet away from the house. Ten feet away from the house, meet all the setbacks, but anyway, Gina, you had your name, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I kind of liked it, that it was just not allowed, that keeps it simple. I like, keep it simple, uh, going, this is new, people are gonna be worried about it. If you just keep it, that it's not allowed in the front yard.
But what if it's not visible from the street, right? Like, and somebody is trying to be more solar, solar conscious.
Yeah, I mean.
So then you wanna, you wanna add a screen, so then, so then you have a screening requirement as part of the special permit. Criteria that says the screening must make it invisible, uh, or prevent the view from the street.
I think.
So now you've got a wall. Up in front of it, so you're driving by the street, you're looking at a wall.
It, it depends on the area, sorry, Lee, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think the board, this issuing the permit can review those things and impose the appropriate kind of conditions. It's just, it's just whether or not you're gonna open that door or not to allow that discretionary approval and review.
Right, I mean, if you could go down South Street, there are some houses that you can't see from the street, they might be a good candidate for it if they're trying, you know, using up a lot of energy and wanna have solar.
Provide be part, in part because. Well, I, I live in part of the, you know, around the corner from there, and part of that is, you can see the building, but it's so far back, or the altitude.
That's why.
So high up.
That's why it should be discretionary, just depending upon the situation.
Let's put a pin in this.
It's, it's not that they can't do it in front of the house, it's that they can't do it in the required setback area. Do it in front of the house if the house is set way back. Right?
I, well. Lee's initial position was that it would not be allowed in any front yard, because that certainly alters.
But by front yard, don't you mean, like, if it's the front yard requirement is thirty feet, that's the front yard? I thought that's what you meant.
Oh, you mean that once it's outside of that area, it, it can be placed there?
Yeah, even if it's in front of the house, uh. It's, I mean, we've got pretty protected front yard setbacks. I thought you meant, yeah, it can't do it in the front yard.
To Natasha's point. Let's put a pin in setback, it's clearly not a policy item that we're gonna have to debate. So let's continue on with the other modifications, Lee, that you've made from Dewar.
Uh, the other thing that.
We have three left.
Right, so, um, I think Dewar did not mention, um. Um, the, the BIPV solar energy systems and the surface integrated systems, and I just wanted to make sure, um, that. When you had those kinds of systems, that it was clear that they fell, um, under the parameters of. Uh, of, of Needham zoning by law, in terms of their materials, their, their materials and their placement. And on the impervious, um, for ground mounted systems and surface integrated solar in, energy systems, I wanted to make sure that they were governed by the. Um, impervious lot coverage requirements within, within the aquifer protection district, and also that they had to meet the stormwater by law. So all I did was add a reference to those systems and link them back to the appropriate provisions in the zoning by law. Um, the next one relates to, um, site plan approval, again, this.
Sorry, hold on, what, so. But Artie's just said, these are pervious, they're not impervious.
Lee's referring to the part of it, that, the part of it that's going over a certain area, I believe.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm referring to, the part that's actually going over, um.
Impervious here.
The impervious portion of the ground mounted solar energy system.
The impervious portion of a ground. But that's just basically the legs and the tracks that the panels fit in, plus each panel itself, is that right?
No, no, the panels are not considered, the system is not considered impervious. It's not, that whether it be the panels or the, the panels, and it's not considered impervious, and it's not considered impervious. A solar system is considered pervious.
So this is something that I think we need a little more clarity on.
Okay.
So do you wanna move on to the next one?
Okay, so the next one was basically on the site plan approval piece of it, and that was just to basically, um, call out the fact that, um. I was requiring, I, the door was not requiring a site plan approval for, we talked about this earlier, medium scale ground mounted. Um, and, um, I was requiring that, um, across all zoning districts. Um, but in both cases, the site plan approval process was created for small and medium scale. I just broadened the medium scale to include residential a- and non-residential districts. Um, to, to include both of them.
Very good, any questions on that?
Uh, well, again, you know, it, it says planning board would serve as the special permit granting authority and. Uh, and nowhere are we saying that, that this medium scale requires a special permit, so we just have to be careful with our language.
Okay, I can correct that.
So the last one, Lee, do you wanna walk us through that, and then we'll start moving, coming up with decisions?
Oh, yes, this, these were the design standards, um, that door had in their model, um, I think I used all of them. Um, with the exception of I added a standard on height. Um, and layout, um, for review by the entity issuing this, doing the site plan approval. And I added a standard, um. For height and, and layout and lighting, which they did not have in theirs.
Because we're gonna light these things?
Well, I think I said that the authority shall look at the physical lighting of the site, including the methods of exterior lighting, for these are for the, some of these larger systems. For convenience, safety and security within the site, and in consideration of the impacts on neighboring properties and excessive light pollution. Where feasible, light, lighting of the solar energy system shall be directed downward and shall. where feasible light, lighting of the solar energy system shall be directed downward and shall incorporate full cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution. So I add that on, on light, on height and layout, I said that the entity come, doing the site plan approval shall also review the height and physical layout of the solar energy systems, utility connections, and a, a potential, infrastructure as it relates to the convenience and safety of emergency vehicles, private vehicles and pedestrian movement on the site. Those were the design criteria that were not in the D O E R model that I thought were appropriate to include here.
Okay, so now let's go through, uh, you know, it's, it's eight thirty, this is a substantive element of our agenda. And the goal of this meeting is to give Lee direction, so that way at another meeting in December um, uh, she can have what would amount to pretty close to a final version. Because Lee, in January, to stay on track for a May meeting, right, we have to, when would we have to refer this to the select board, to the select board?
I'd like to get it done by the first or second meeting in January. So I'd like to bring this zoning to a conclusion and have us be satisfied with the language by the end of this year, so we can move it forward in, in January.
So unless we want to meet, so I, I, you okay, Gene?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I just sneezed, sorry.
These things happen. So what I'd like to do is take a recess for two minutes, for maybe five minutes, uh, uh, and then come back. And when we come back, we're gonna go through, and maybe Alex, you can resend it to everyone in between. Uh, there's sort of the draft zoning that Lee did. And each of the highlighted items and maybe some of the other items, we, hello? Hello, oh, uh, uh, then we're gonna start giving Lee direction. Um, and then we'll, you know, Artie, you and I will have to duke it out on on building mounted in some way.
Just, uh, just to be clear, we're talking about the seven page solar energy system zoning approach, key policy decision points highlighted, that document, correct?
Yes, so, uh, Natasha, do you have that?
Yellow, with the yellow things that Lee has?
Yeah, you have some yellow on it.
Well, we just looked at right now.
No, it's not. What we looked at right now is the memo. And you had wanted Lee to make distinction between what Dewar had.
Sorry, maybe I'm, I'm, hold on.
But I, but we talked about all the items, basically, and the zoning is basically the same thing as the memo, it's.
So Lee has just explained all of the areas that she's drafted in the zoning that vary from Dewar. That's one exercise. Now the main exercise is to give Lee direction on what Alex has pulled up.
An article on zoning by law.
Exactly, that's the zoning by law. So, and so Artie and Gene, do you both have it up in front of you as well?
I, I have it printed out with my notes on it.
Yeah, no, I have it, yeah, I have it.
So are you okay to take a little bathroom break for three or four minutes and then we'll come back and get cracking? Alex, are you able to put a sign that we're recessed for a couple of minutes? So we will leave. Thank you. So it's uh eight thirty-eight, let's reconvene at eight forty-two, is that okay?
Plus.
Great, thanks. Hello? You're sure? All right, so we are waiting for Lee, Alex, and Natasha, we're still recording though. Natasha's here and here's Lee.
I'm here.
Alex is back, okay. So let's bring up, if you would, Alex, please, the, the zoning by law. And see if we can get through much of this. So, Lee, I think for the definitions, you're clear on one D and one E. Um. I wonder if we need to. So, Artie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, I know we disagree on this, that pole, a pole mounted system is X number of solar arrays mounted to a single pole. And as opposed to a canopy, uh, which is, you know, wh- where the panels are mounted on a canopy and a canopy structure has four legs.
We're not comparing, we're not, no, actually, we're not, we're not comparing a canopy to a pole, we're comparing a ground mounted to a pole. And the fact is that a, tech, a pole mounted system could have multiple poles connected on the same array. It could, they could be multiple poles in the same rate, just like a ground mounted, it's gonna have multiple feet on the same.
Let me, okay, so to be clear, Alex, can you stop sharing and can I share for a second? Thank you very much, uh. Uh, let me just see if I have this up, okay, so I gotta go back into Zoom. So this is what I regard as a pole mounted system. Can you guys see my screen?
Except, except that pole mounted system, those two, those two panels, those two separate arrays could be one long array on two poles holding up that one array. So two poles holding up, a ground mounted, it's multiple poles, hands it up. In this particular case, I mean, these are, this is a, this is at least a um two axis system, I don't know if it's a three axis system, so it's angling, it's pitching it up and probably rotating it following the sun. But we, but we already have, where we already have coverage in the bylaw to account for any system that's, that's bi, that's bi-axial or tri-axial. And, and it still has to meet the, and it still has to meet the height restrictions, still has to meet the ground, ground setbacks restrictions. And again, again, this system could very well be on one, could be one array with two poles. So it isn't just that. And again, that's, that's, you know, that's showing up quite a high system. And so what we're talking about here is a system that would still have to mount, meet this height and setback requirements and ground, and ground coverage.
So this is what, that's right, so that's why I'm bringing this up, Artie, because just as an example, I, you know, I'm not sure that any of us would want this either A and
And any, and but you just, you just discounted what I said, I just said.
Not at all.
No, you did, you're saying, you, yes, you did, you're, you're saying none of us would want this in their neighbor's yard according to it. I don't necessarily disagree with you. What I'm saying is, this is, this is, this is just one ver- version of it. You could have a ground mount system, which is an agricultural ground mount system, that's much higher and that's much higher than a normal ground mount system. And so, no.
So, so, so I, that's why, so I'm, I'm bringing this up, not to, not for the purposes of inciting an argument, but only for the purposes of determining, A, do we allow this? And B, how do we define it? And C, how, under what circumstances do we allow it? I, all I'm, like, I don't think that I would not want to advocate this in a residential district. One second, Artie, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
No, no.
At the same setback.
No, you're using, no.
As, as, as an accessory structure, which we're otherwise allowing.
Except for you're using this, you're using this example, which would never meet our, which would never meet our ground mount requirements. A pole system can meet ground mount requirements. It could be a much lower pitch, much low, much, much lower pitch, much lower to the ground. This is an extreme example, just like you can have ground mount systems, which works much higher than a regular ground mount system. So no, I'm not talking about this. I wish I could pull up a, I, I could probably find some, some samples.
If you could, that would be great.
This is, this is not a good, this is not a good example to try to show people, say, well, this is what's gonna be in the neighbor's yard. No, it's not true at all. What's gonna be, what could be in the neighbor's yard is something that looks exactly like the ground mount system, but except for having four leg, you know, a bunch of legs, it has two legs.
Okay, so. Question, are, are we trying to, are we trying to address the section one definitions, items D and E, what's, what's small scale, your scale, is that what we're trying to do?
No, no, I'm trying to figure out under what circumstance, first of all, do we classify this as a separate system, in which case we need to modify our definitions, right? And what that modification would be, so.
Okay.
It's true.
Things first and then say, in addition to
We're, we're, we're dealing with section one definitions. I want to give Lee direction so we can resolve our definitions and then we can move on to the next item.
One C fits, one C fits the exact same definition of what a, what a pole mounted could be allowed in, 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 in any part of town, any part of residential area, has to meet the height setbacks, setbacks, I mean, height, the heights setbacks on the ground, ground coverage. What the examples you're not showing are not examples that was, which had ever fallen to a category that were, that we have here, it can never fall into this.
So I, 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 I don't know that that's true because we're allowing, wait, wait, let me, let me, Artie, let me finish. You just made a statement and let me explain. Ab, you want this, you want, you want me to afford you the same opportunity, which I do. So please be respectful. I'm not saying this because I'm trying to skew the debate. I'm giving one example of a structure that I don't think is good planning. For instance, in a residential district, this example, this application, I can pull up, I understand the concept of other ground mounted, we've talked about it. But we've also talked about allowing height up to thirty-five feet or more for the main structure. So in fact, this application could potentially exist. And I'm trying to give focus and attention on what, on, on, on these definitions, so we can either choose to include or exclude certain types of applications, that's all.
I fit this under, so what you were talking about going up to the height, you were talking about my solar canopy. Um, these are not solar canopies, though I can see that some people may try to make them one, but no, these are not solar canopies. These are simply ground mounted structures that have requirements.
So let's.
Intent, so requirements, setbacks, ground covers, exact same.
So here's my point. I don't, I'll agree with you, the number of legs or poles is irrelevant. And I'll agree that these are, you know, these are, you know, if you want, if you see it as ground mounted, I'll call them ground mounted too, that's fine. You're right, the quintessential element in the regulation is the height and the setback of these. So I don't, like, you know, I don't think that I would, if we want to allow this kind of a thing, do we, um, if we do it under a ground mounted system, I don't think we want this as the same height as the height of a primary structure or a house, correct?
Well, while I agree, just like, just like we don't want a ground mounted system, the same as a prime, as the, as the house as well.
Right, right. So, so, and then we talk, so so you see this as defined as a ground mounted system. so you see this as defined as a ground-mounted system? And I, and then I guess how would we determine, because we define a ground-mounted system also by size, so after C.
The, the problem, the problem is, your concern, I get it, your concern about this is, can be the exact same concern as a quote, other version of a ground-mounted system, they, their concerns do not differ. The concern is built, this concern may be built upon a parking canopy in someone's yard, parking canopies in someone's yard, so if you wanna say a ground-mounted system, you know, we've already said a ground-mounted system can never be more than ten feet high. So we've already, we've already stated that. And, and this is a ground-mounted system, there's not a solar canopy, it's not a parking canopy, it's a ground-mounted system.
So, well, then when we come to, so Lee, do you see this application as consistent with a ground-mounted system?
Yes, it's, it's, it's on the ground, yes, so it's, yes.
Okay, so then on that basis, how would you, when we talk about the lot coverage for a ground-mounted system, how would you measure the, the area of this?
That might be why Natick had both definitions in, where they counted the panels, and they also counted the profile on the ground.
Well, that's where, I mean, that's where the profile on the ground is, is what counts the most, is again, you, I mean, most.
They counted both of them, and that might be the reason why they counted both.
Yeah, it's, it's, but they're contradictory of each other, I mean, for example, so, any pole-mounted, ground-mounted system is gonna be starting two feet, three feet from the ground, give or take, it won't go any more than ten feet high. It might have a pitch of twenty degrees, might have a pitch of twenty-five degrees. And so the, the projection on the ground, it'll be, I don't know, ten percent less than the, than the square footage of the panels, give or take, I'd have to check it out, but it'll be a certain percentage less than the square feet of the panels themselves, that'll be the projection on the ground, it'll never, they will never be tilted, as we're seeing right here. They would never be tilted like this, they will always be, they're, they were almost, the odds are, they will be somewhere in your category of twenty, twenty-five degrees, some might go a little steeper, but that's what they're gonna be. This, this, these right here, this is a, at least, like I said, either bi-tri-axial system, which is, which is for the winter, which is for the winter sun, it's pitched at, that's gonna be pitched close, damn close to forty-five, fifty degrees right there. That's never gonna happen with a ground-mounted system, fixed ground-mounted system. And it's, and it can't go.
But this is. But this, you just said this is a fixed ground-mounted.
No, 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 this, this might be a bi-tri-axial system, where it could be following the sun, but it's more than ten feet high, so it doesn't matter anyway, it can't exist, it wouldn't be allowed. Wouldn't be allowed. Wouldn't be allowed.
So if Natick, if Natick already kind of vetted this, should we look at what Natick did, Lee, if that makes sense?
Yes, Natick basically had, had the two standards in it for measuring the, they set a maximum height of ten feet, and Natick basically limited it to, they had a lot covered standard. And they, they indicated that the ground-mounted system couldn't, was measured by the total surface area of this, of the energy system counted toward lot coverage. And they also had a provision that indicated that the individual panels themselves had to be measured. And the square footage of the measurement of the panels was, was the contribution toward the maximum lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
Right.
Excuse me, so you don't see from the images that I had up on the screen a reason to separately define that application?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, I just.
So I'll have to put it, so I'll have to put a pin in that, but otherwise, I don't think that there are any other dangers to the definitions. So now we come to the use section, which is on page two, item three, and then it's really item six point two, and so on, so we, we all, do we all agree that a roof-mounted solar energy system shall be permitted in all use districts? Thanks, Alex. Natasha, Jean, yes, Jean, go ahead.
Yes, I, I don't understand the provisions on six point two one, basic requirements. Roof mount, roof, alright, I understand what a roof-mounted system is, it's, you know, it can be, have a little elevation from the roof, depending on the pitch and all that, and that's fine, but what I don't understand is, of course, if comply with the regulations provided in the section, but what is the purpose of the reference to properties with non-conforming uses of structures do not increase the non-conformity, and, and also the use of the word and? If they're allowed, if, if they comply with the regulations provided in this section and are located on properties with non-conforming uses of structures. I, I, that.
Well, what I, what I was trying to say is that you could put it on a non-conforming structure as of right, without having to get a special permit.
I think what you wanna say is, instead of, after number one, and just reword it without the numbers, comply with the regulations provided this, in this section, and if located on properties with non-comforming uses or structures, they do not increase the non-conformity, except with respect to dimensions, and shall not be considered change, so I understood what you're doing, but it's just not wording quite right, I think. Okay. And then in the next section, we get into the rear and side yards, rear and side yards in both B and C. And now I understand that we're not talking about the rear and side setbacks.
No, I was talking about the rear and side yards.
The whole yard, whatever the yard is. So it, it might still work, though, as we were saying before, with regard to, to front yards, to allow them in front yards, but not within the required front yard setback.
Well, they're, they're not allowed in the, in the, in the setback for the rear and the, in the, in the side either, and they're forced to be in the rear and the side.
Oh. Yeah, they're not allowed in that, well, they are, they're, they're, they have to comply with the requirements for accessory structures, right?
Yes, they're allowed in the rear and the side yards. And depending upon their height, they're treated as an accessory structure, yes.
So they could be in a, in a, like a garage, a short, garage that's not too tall, a, a parking canopy that's not too tall, could be within five feet of the lot line.
Well, no, 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 we, no, we had an example, we know, we had an exception where they have to meet the, 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 the mains, the main, main structure setback, I believe, I think, I thought we specifically spelled that out.
I think it was, I think it was about height.
Exactly.
Let me go to it and double-check it.
Yeah. So I, I'm just suggesting that if we do want to allow it to front, maybe we could come up with some special wording for that.
Yes, Jean, Artie's correct, I, I, for solar parking canopies, I allow them to be treated as accessory structures and not meet the, and not meet the full yard setbacks. But if it was a ground-mounted or a, a ground-mounted system, small or medium, they had to meet the district-wide setbacks for the structure.
The primary structure.
Of the primary structure.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of, of, when we, I think Natasha's right, we're gonna need sketches of what we're talking about at town meeting. And I'm not convinced that showing a ground-mounted system, either like the one I showed earlier tonight, or a smaller version of what we have at the dump in someone's front yard is going to be, you know, is gonna get this thing, I think it's gonna ask more questions than it's gonna solve.
Adam, I didn't say we needed sketches, I just said we need to be flexible with the different types.
You, you did, you met, you mentioned sketches, which is a good idea, I agree with you, it's okay, it's okay.
Just to confirm, Adam, Adam, you keep referring to the one you were showing, what you were showing was something that would never be allowed under these bylaws. So what.
It would be allowed at a ten-foot height, five feet away.
But what you, no, no, no. It wouldn't, what you were.
We talked about an, we just talked about an accessory structure.
And, and you, and then Lee just agreed that we have the exception where ground mounts have to meet the principal setback, setbacks on the property line. So what you were showing would never be shown at town.
Okay, so, so that's not true, you could have it twelve feet from your lot line, at ten feet height.
You just said five feet, that's right, you just said five feet.
Okay, I'm correcting myself, forgive me, I'm, forgive me if I'm allowed to make mistakes.
Five, what you were showing was something that was damn close to fifteen, seventeen, or sixteen feet higher, so.
Taller than that, it was as tall as some of the trees on the lot.
Or more, yeah.
But the point, so.
Pointing the example, if we're citing the example, that one, that can never be fit in the bylaw, then there's no sense sending, sending, that is an example that would be a town meeting.
I think a town meeting, so we're dealing with several things here, we're dealing with front yards, we're, we're dealing with yards and setbacks, and, you know, and then also height, but specifically with the basic requirements. We're saying that in a residential district, a small-scale, ground-mounted solar energy system and solar canopies are permitted inside and reared yards, we all agree with that?
Yes.
I agree with that, Natasha, do you agree with that?
Yes.
And Jean, you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
And Artie, you disagree with that?
No, I agree, no, this is the matter, the only, the only, the only option, the only conversation was that we're gonna allow anything in front yards, that's all. By special permit, that was the only thing.
Yeah, I, I thought we were talking about whether we needed to do that, I.
That, that's all we're talking about here.
Yeah, if we don't wanna do it, I'm fine with not doing it in the front yard at all, just, as I said, keep it simple.
By special.
That's my, so that's my preference, Natasha, is that your preference too?
Yes.
Artie, are you okay if we don't do it in the front yard for now?
No, I think, Natasha, were you just agreeing with what I was saying by special permit? Are you agreeing that we don't?
No, I think it should be by special permit.
So you want, so you want to allow it in front yards?
Well, why don't I, why don't I add it in that way, and you can always take it out after you hold your hearings.
Well.
Lee, can I, can I ask you, can I ask something, this gets to that point, at what point, at what point can we take language out and add language in before it goes to the select board? Then after the select board, we can't make things more restrictive, but at town meeting, we can. So Lee, could you, could you walk me, walk us through the
The process.
The process of when we can and can't make changes.
Well, you can make, how do I say this, you, you can't, you can't make it, you can't make something, you know, more more restrictive than, than you've advertised it as. So you, you could, you could advertise it with a special permit provision in it. And you could decide before town meeting that, you know, you don't wanna include that in your warrant language after you hold the hearings, you could decide, well, this will offer this option by special permit in the front yard. Well, we accept testimony at the public hearing on it, and then the article that you actually advanced to the warrant, you could modify it so that it took that provision out.
Does that make it more restrictive or less restrictive?
So it would make it less restrictive at the final version, Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, I think everything we're talking about is adding something that's new, so that nothing we're talking about is making the zoning less restrictive than it is now. So I think the real concern on making changes is making the zoning more, both more restrictive than you advertised it, but also more restrictive than it is currently. And we're not doing that at all. So as Lee said, if we advertised it as, say, you can do this by special permit, and then we take it out and say, no, you can't do it at all. I, I do think that's, that, that's making it more restrictive than what's advertised, but it's not making it more restrictive than the current zoning.
Yes.
Oh, so, so that means we can, that means we can have discussion on a building mounting solar, solar lid, or whatever you wanna call it, we can have those discussions, then at some point, we can take it out, that would be allowed.
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
So I so I think we're clear, you know, on the process, I just, I wouldn't recommend that we even advertise allowing it, whether by special permit or otherwise, because by special permit, although it's discretionary, Lee, when was the last time the planning board has denied a special permit?
Rarely.
So I think that, I think, I don't wanna fool ourselves. You know, you know, I would, I, I personally don't advocate to allow this thing in a, in a front yard, or if we do, then we have a separate, either a separate definition, or in the setbacks in height, we have further regulations for a front yard system. But I, I just don't see it as good public policy today, and you know, we haven't really seen, you know, really a need for it by market demand, and even if it's allowed by special permit, so.
Well, we have an opportunity to review this one more time before it's advertised.
Yes.
When Paul is with us, okay, so we're two to two right now. I, I suggest that Lee draft it with special permit language to allow in the front yard, and we as a board review it again, when we have Paul with us, and we'll see how, how we vote at that time.
Okay, okay.
I think that sounds reasonable.
And so the next item is a medium-scale mounted, shall be permitted subject to site plan review, and then it will say by the planning board, we all concur with that?
Yes.
I do, Artie, Jean does, Artie, do you?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not making any change to be, and that was for, I'm sorry, in residential districts, in non-residential districts, small, again, is allowed in rear and side yards, this is for non-residential districts, medium-scale and solar canopies are required to be by site plan, by, by the planning board. And the same restriction shall apply to effectively the Dover Amendment. And so, does anyone have any objection to that? Okay, I don't, Jean does not, Natasha, do you?
Are we, are we talking about allowing this special permit for front yards in this section too, or just, you know, drafting it for further review, is it? Are we?
All right, let's, let me, Jean, we'll come to that, we'll come back to that in a second.
Okay.
So do, Artie, you, do you have any objection to one C?
The only, the only, the only thing I would say is, in this area right here, this use, that's where we would, I think this is where we have to add something where it says, you know, the full building mounting, if we wanna call them building-mounted canopies, fine, call them that, for the sake of argument right now, but it would, I think, this is, this is an area where we'd be, where we'd be entering those.
So I, I, stand on again, Artie, my.
We're talking about, I'm talking about, some of us are talking about allowing the possibility of building-mounted solar, which is different than building, roof-mounted solar. So this is the area, this is the area now where I think we need to add that language, something in there about building-mounted solar. Is that's, in some ways, that's what we're starting to call.
So let's, let's, Artie, give, give me one minute, and then we'll come back to that, I just wanna get consensus for Lee on six point two point one C.
But that's what I'm talking about, adding this, adding something to six point two point one C.
I think six, I think what, when we're dealing with front yards, and when we're dealing with what you're talking about, that would probably be a different provision, I think.
My, my apologies, Adam, I think you're correct, my apologies.
Thank you, so do you have any objection to C?
I don't see any objection to it.
Okay, so now, we'll take the pin out. Okay, so now we'll take the pin out. And in terms of the front yard. Lee, is this where you would modify, have this, modify ground mounted systems in a front yard? In residential districts?
In residential, no, I would, I would do it under B. I would, I would add language in B that you could also do it by special permit. And if you want, and if you want to do it in the non-residential districts, I would, I would, I would put it in um, C as well.
Do you want to limit it? Does anyone want to limit it to certain, if we do it, if we allow, first of all. Natasha, do you want these things by special permit in both residential and non-residential districts?
Thinking about that, um.
You mean, what's the difference of driving up to my house and seeing the solar panel versus driving up to TripAdvisor or the hospital? And seeing a, a front, you know, a front yard, solar panel array system.
The reason why, why I think it should be by special permit is because it's, it's all based on the orientation of a building. Right, so.
So I'm not questioning the special permit function. I'm questioning the, the districts.
But I think it should be for both.
So for all districts. Okay, uh, Jean, do you agree that uh, front yard solar system should be allowed in all districts?
I think if we're going to allow them at all in the front yard by special permit, then may as well have the same provision in the non-residential. But as I said before, I would just assume not allow them at this stage. Um, and that's my, that's my position on it at the moment.
Artie, what about you?
But but at least go to draft the language if we're gonna.
Yeah, the fun, the interesting thing is, Adam, that um, you probably saw on the letter I sent over is that. You know, I was, I was, after the last meeting, I was thinking about stuff and I decided, you know, it's, this, this, this is the math, this is the science, isn't it being pragmatic? Uh, as far as what we're going to get through. Do um, do I think we should, we should leave it in the language right now that we should allow by special permit? Yes. Are we going to keep it? Are we going to keep them there when it hits town meeting? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, that's, I truly don't know.
I get that. What I'm trying to get clarity on, Artie, is are you saying that's the case for both residential and non-residential districts?
Yes, yes, yes. If we're gonna allow residential, have to allow it non, non-residential as well by special permit. I'm fine with that.
Now, we have different requirements in our front yards for commercial, in commercial districts. So. I. I, we can't allow them on the sidewalk because that would be a municipal function and not a private function. Except we do have, for instance, on Chapel Street. Where separate from the municipal right away or the sidewalk. I think like French press has, uh, you know, has a setback even further. So would we allow? Uh, would we allow it, I, um. What would amount to a solar canopy over a seating area then?
The, the fact, the fact remains is absolutely. I mean, and like, for example, French press, they have a canopy there. Of course, they, of course, they, they could have solar panels on top of that if they wanted to. If they're gonna have a roof on it. Any type of, any type of pergola or anything, certainly have solar, solar panels on it. I, which is, I'm not saying we should, I'm not saying a grandma should be allowed right there, but, but certainly that should be allowed to have solar panels on it, but of course it should.
So then on ground mounted, Artie, to your point, on ground mounted in the front in the front yard or front setback of a commercial building. You would not allow?
No, I would allow, but I don't know. I'm, I'm sure there's probably some bad, some bad examples of where we wouldn't want them, but maybe maybe we need to be careful about that one, but of, of course, we'd want to allow them in some front yards, technically front yards of commercial buildings for. I don't see why not.
Who, are, are you able to think of those circumstances where you wouldn't?
Um, well.
Cause that might be the limitation on how, when we get into set setbacks.
Sure, you are, yeah, no, I think that's where, I think that's where we're going to get into. I, I can't think of an example. I suppose I can make one up. It may be wrong or right, but I mean, if we have some commercial or retail establishment which has some type of I don't know, setback from the road, which is beyond the constraints that necessary. Um, would, would we, would we want the solar system there? Are we a regular ground mount? Probably not from a, from a retail standpoint, from the town standpoint, where the solar canopy would be allowed there? Sure, in some cases.
So, Lee, this discussion is bringing something interesting up. If, you know, if Artie and I go for, or Natasha and I go for, all of us go for brunch at Fresco. And we, and we go to the, uh, um. You know, the doggy daycare, the, the, what do you call that place? Uh, the grooming dog groomer that's next door for the pizza shop and so on. A lot of those businesses are setback. Farther than the, you know, farther than the minimum setback. And Artie talked about a canopy, which I think, which in that circumstance. As long as it doesn't take up the seating area. Cause I think that would be weird to like allow it, you know, at a three foot height. Uh, you know, right in front of uh, Fresco or right in front of the dry cleaner or FedEx. But if they wanted to add a canopy or a pergola, and then they wanted to affix solar panels on top of that, I don't see that that's a problem, but we, I think we need to allow for it in our system. Um, Jean?
Uh, the way the, uh, section six point two one is written, um, and yeah, it, it doesn't seem to allow, um, building, um. What do they called, uh? Building mounted, um, solar at all.
Well, I think, I, I, I was just assuming building mounting solar was already allowed, that we didn't have to specifically allow it.
Well, I thought we had a long conversation about how we don't want to allow it on uh, roofs, uh, that would be above a certain height and so forth. Um, if there's a certain kind of building mounted solar that we are going to allow. We should say so. For, for example, on page four, when it talks about height. It talks, it has a special category, other building mounted solar energy system.
Right.
For example, awnings, but in section, um. It's six point two, we don't seem to allow any building mounted at all. So I think we.
You think, okay, you see, you think we should call it out then?
Yeah, if we're going to allow any building uh, with some, with the limitations that we discussed, we should say what type of building mounted we will allow. And for example, we were just talking about, well, they're not awnings, but ru- what are they called? Canopies over dining areas that might be builder mounted.
Well, I mean, let me give an example, let me give an example. Okay, so. Me, um, so for example, the buildings and, you know, a lot of buildings in the center of town are not already, are, are not already at height. They can still go higher if they wanted to. Technically, we couldn't stop them if they wanted to build some type of quote, solar canopy over it. Probably, we couldn't stop them, probably. Because we allow mechanicals to go above a certain height and the, and they're not, they're not already at the height anyway. They can go higher. Um, what I, what I, what I, where my, where my brain is focused right now, although, um, again, I think they can always, they can already build them there if they wanted to. Where my brain is focused on, and these particular buildings, examples that we've seen, is not there. My brain's focus is on, again, the more commercial, much more commercial. Uh, over the other side of one twenty, maybe this side of one twenty, uh, maybe it's just, those are the areas I'm, I'm, I'm focusing on where where we need, we, we need to allow the conversation to, so that they can go above. The allowable building height is then the mechanicals can go fifteen feet. I'm not necessarily saying that, but the mechanicals can already go fifteen feet. This is a mechanical, it had, would have no walls on it. So basically a see-through, obviously, you know, it has a roof, but it's a see-through. It's not a, it's not an occupied space by people. It's an unoccupied space. Like in the, it's a mechanical, above the chemical.
So Artie, Artie, hold on one second, just to get a technical clarity. Lee, is that something we address in this section, basic requirements? We're talking about accessory uses, or would we address what Artie is talking about elsewhere? Like by height and by setback?
I'm, I really need to get some thought to how to address what Artie wants to do, because it's really not structured here and I I don't know the best way of doing it. I didn't, didn't design this to have that in there, so um, I need to give it some thought, Adam. On the best way to do.
It's understandable. So, Artie. Um. Alex, can you please bring up page? Fifty-two. In our system. Jean, I saw that.
Excuse me. Uh, and what document is this?
The page fifty-two is of our, uh, packet. There we go.
The solid design.
Next page. Yeah, uh, next page, please. It's funny, I have it as fifty-two, okay. So go down. So Art, if we just hold it right there. So Artie. If you look at this bottom image. That to me is not a canopy. It's, I, I doubt that you could fit any other mechanicals underneath the front of the building because that's the lowest height to the building.
Yeah, no, this is, but then that's, I'm, I'm sorry, Adam, my introduction, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So. Uh, if we look at the picture to the right on the bottom here. I, I would allow that in any commercial district. I would not personally recommend restricting that to just the, um, just the, uh, New England Business Center. But Alex, if you move up a little bit.
That right there, yeah.
That type of application, and then can you continue to scroll up, please? So. I would also. The top structure. I might really only allow in the New England Business Center. The, this, the lower structure on this page. It looks like it adds another height, another story. It kind of does add another story.
Sure, sure. That could, that could be twelve feet above, sure.
So that might be more. I, I could see that in the, in mixed use one twenty-eight and the New England Business Center District. But not really in the center business district or in the heights.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I, I tend to agree, the only, the only, the only aspect I that I would disagree is the fact that technically, if the, if the building is not at height, they can already do something like that if they want to. Uh, so I, so, so to the point that I agree, if the buildings are already at height in those areas. I don't, I, I'm not advocating to allow them to be another ten, fifteen feet above that if they're already at height. But in, in the mixed use, in the other side of one twenty, that I am, I am advocating them to allow them to be getting up towards the already allowable uh, mechanical height allowance above the roof surface, but I'm not advocating out of the heights area of the square.
Well, so. If you have a building that's two stories. Or keep it simple, one story, which is, well, I don't know. Natasha, what's the height of a one-story commercial building? Twenty feet, fifteen feet?
I mean, it all depends on the building.
Of course.
Different, it depends on.
So let's, let's say it's fifteen feet then. So if it's fifteen.
Fifteen feet is, that is a little low because you have structure, so.
Okay, okay, fine. So let's say twenty feet then.
Okay.
So if you've got a twenty-foot single-story building. And already to your point, the maximum height is forty-five. Can you, can you guys hear me?
I can hear, I can, I can hear you, Adam.
Uh, sorry, my headset just died. Uh, if you can. Uh. If the maximum height is forty-five feet. Either by special permit or by rights, we'll set that question aside, but the maximum height is forty-five feet. Wouldn't it be nuts to have like a canopy that was twenty-five feet higher than the height of the building? Like, would we want to?
But, but, but it would never, but, but that would never, but that would never be the case. I mean, for one, that would never be the case. I understand why you I understand why you're wording it that way. I mean, I get that, okay, I do. Uh, but the fact is that they're allowed to build to a certain height. We couldn't, we can't stop them for building to a certain height. We can't stop them.
But what we can do here is, or when we deal with height. Is restrict the height. In that scenario that you're talking about. So that it's no more than fifteen feet above, you know, above the existing height of the current structure.
I mean, certainly within the building, if a building is twenty feet, the max is forty-five feet. They're not going to build it more than fifteen, ten, fifteen feet above it anyway, even if, whether they did it, even if they did it, which the odds are pretty low. But they did it, it would never be more than what he's talking about anyway. But again, they're allowed to do it. Would they ever do it that, to the forty-five feet? No, they would not. They would, if they were doing it that high, it's because they're having some type of living structure of some kind under it, something going on under it. Which has to do with human occupancy.
Let's, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I disagree with it technically, but we'll, we'll put a pin in it for now. So, just to wrap up on accessory uses, so we still have to figure out how we're going to handle and where we handle a smaller version of the, what I call the pole mounted system. I know it's really a ground mounted system. But that, you know, a smaller version of that. And. And. As, you know, we call that out as, as a, as a, one of these additional uses. And then. I think these other uses. That you said that you have to think through as well.
Adam, Adam, let me give you an example of something which I think we would want to allow. Um, so, you know, I, I've mentioned, you know, whether it's ever going to happen. Probably shouldn't ever happen, but, you know. Excuse me, I mentioned something about, you know, having a, having a roof deck, a restaurant, a roof deck, some type of roof deck living above a restaurant, something like that, it'd be pretty cool. I think that'd be pretty awesome to have.
Yeah, agreed.
Now, when they, when they have something like that, they would want to have some type of pergola over it, probably some type of pergola, which means they, you know, have the option to have solar, you know, have solar panels, makes perfect sense. Now, is that going to cover the whole building? Probably not, but, you know, they would want, you know, we, it makes sense to make sure we all have an allowance for it. Have something that on a building now, that, that's, they were talking, you know, ten feet, twelve feet maximum, or something like that, probably. If it's any type of pergola or some type of, you know, living space, outdoor living space on top of a building like that. But I think would be pretty cool things to have in town. I mean, that.
I, I agree.
Pretty cool. That'd be pretty cool.
I agree. Uh. So we, so we, we'll come to that, I guess, when we deal with, with height, um, to make sure that we can allow for that. Uh. So now we are into dimensional regulations. And lot, lot coverage. Thanks, Alex. Um. So. Lee, do you want to walk us through what you're suggesting in six point two point two A one?
Um. Well, A one just basically says, I think, that active solar systems are not buildings, um. Um, under the NIDAM bylaw, however, that for purposes of regulating lot coverage. Um, the area of solar energy systems shall count toward, uh, the maximum percentage of lot coverage. Um, as I, as identified in Needham zoning regulations, and it creates, um. Um, as I, as identified in Needham zoning regulations, and it creates um a series of standards. It would further describe how that requirement is to apply. So it says first, um, that the active solar systems contributions um toward lot coverage. Um, are calculated um as a function of this panel size, um, and that the total panel size essentially. Um, is calculated and there's a square footage number assigned to that, and that. That value is, is added to whatever building coverage there is to calculate lot coverage. Um, it also says that in the event that they're under item three, in the event that there is a um. Uh, a building-mounted system, um, or a, or a solar parking canopy that extends. Um, beyond the impervious area. Over which it is placed on a parking lot, that that counts toward maximum lot coverage, so. Um, those extensions um also count toward lot coverage. It, it further clarifies that ground-mounted systems, um, it's basically the surface area of the solar system that counts toward lot coverage. And I think this is where I need to check. Uh, between two and four to find out, um. If number two was designed to cover something that went beyond what number four. Um, describes here, um, and then there's a provision that clarifies that. That, that basically, that the double counting needs to be, is, is to be avoided, that what sits on top, what, what is, what is. What is sitting on top of an existing building, for example, doesn't count toward uh additional lot coverage.
So. If we look at Fresco, for an example. Where Artie and I are having brunch. And the owners, um. Decide to put up. A pergola. That comes ten feet in front of their. Uh, restaurant. Over the seating area. And that canopy is, let's say. Roughly twenty feet high. That. Area of the canopy. Is not regarded as double counted. Because it exceeds, because it extends beyond the footprint of the building itself. And so that incremental um. Uh, area. Of the canopy. Would be additionally included. As a contribution to lot coverage, correct?
Correct.
But if it were on top of the building. It, 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 it wouldn't be counted.
So now you raise an interesting thing, so now if you and Artie. Are at a rooftop restaurant. On top of Fresco.
Right, but you're, you're not changing the lot coverage, right, you're, the lot coverage is the same, so I, I'm, I agree with, with what Lee has here, because. Basically, she's saying you have to abide by lot coverage, and if it's on top of a building. It's already covering the lot.
Is a per, does a pergola count? I mean, I, I don't want to drag this on too much with this particular thing. Is, I mean, I don't want to be a contributor to that, but is a pergola, would, would a pergola count in front of the building, would that count towards lot coverage?
Yeah, because that's your covering the lot, right? You just abide by the lot coverage allowable.
Yeah, it, it includes a building or a structure, and then a structure. So it's obviously, um, and a structure, I think, is defined as something with a roof. Any construct, thing constructed or erected, the use of, which requires a fixed location on the ground.
Yes, okay.
So, so we allow, so French press was allowed to do theirs. Even though it was. Maximizing the special permit. We just, we didn't have any, we didn't have any guidelines, because obviously, we want, we want every restaurant to succeed. Would that be allowed, or do we not worry about it, I'm not sure.
It was allowed, but there were constraints, and it had to.
There's not a lot coverage requirement in Needham Center, governed by an FAR.
Oh, oh, so, oh, so, okay, so we don't have a lot of coverage, okay.
In other areas, we do have lot coverage, and it just basically, you have to abide by what we decided the lot coverage was in general.
Right.
Or you put it on top of your building, and the lot, the building is the lot covered, it has the lot coverage.
Unless any part extends over the building. And that additional overage.
Then that would have to be part of the lot coverage.
Yeah, exactly.
But, 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 but Lee, by what you just said. Like, anything in front of Fresco, there was no lot coverage requirement, so.
But there's a setback standard.
But there's, there's a setback standard, so they could have a pergola, they were panels on, it's not gonna have, I didn't, not a lot coverage, period.
Artie, as long as you have the, the setback requirement.
As long as you have a setback, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we don't wanna, yeah.
Jean, are you okay?
Something that's already there.
Jean, are you okay with what we're talking about?
I don't know if Jean can hear us.
Jean, you're muted.
Self, that's I. Uh, but I just didn't want. Room noise to carry, but it's, it's quiet here, um, the, um, again, with. Uh, item three under um lot coverage refers to building-mounted solar energy systems, and uh. So I do think, you know, going back to our prior section. We should make it clear what we're talking about when we talk about them.
Okay.
Okay.
So now. We're talking about a roof-mounted solar system, and we're dealing with height.
Yep.
And we're talking about a building mounted system. And now a roof-mounted solar system. And. Where it's. The pitch of the roof, where the pitch of the. Roof is more than fifteen degrees. The solar panel can't extend more than one foot. Above the roof's surface, regards of mechanicals, is that correctly?
Yes.
So this is that he pitched roof, really, you know, that's greater than a certain pitch.
Yeah, the fact is, it would never, it would never be, that would never happen anyway.
Okay.
From a mechanical win standpoint, that would never happen anyway.
So, then maybe, we should talk, I mean, I, we should talk about the pitch when it's less than that, right? Which is the next item.
Right.
So now we're allowing it to be.
Three feet.
And why? What's the rationale for three feet? And then it goes up to six feet.
So where did this come from, Jean? This came out of Natick.
And it says, if the surface on which the system is to be mounted is below maximum building height. So.
So does that mean it's one foot below maximum, the maximum building height is forty-five feet? And a building is forty-four feet. Then you can go. To. Fifty feet.
No, because you can't go more than three feet above the maximum height for the district. There's a further, there's a second qualification.
That's true, that's right, I see that. Okay. Okay, I don't have a problem with that, I think that's reasonable, anyone like, uh, Natasha, are you okay?
I'm okay, but I want to hear from Artie, and, and general, do you, is that pretty standard?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know why Natick, to be honest, to be honest, did that, I mean, I mean, we could, we could simplify this, but the thing is. I mean, Lee, Lee went through this, grabbed something from Natick, I don't know the rationale of why they did this. Um, I mean, certainly, when you, when you have a roof pitch of. You usually, when you have a roof pitch of ten degrees, um, um, ten degrees, a little bit more than ten degrees. You can start, you can maybe have some, maybe some angled panels on it, but when you get, when you usually would get less than ten degrees. Your, your system is gonna be. You know, maybe a five-degree, seven-degree pitch, if you have a perfectly flat roof, you can have some commercial systems, which again, which can, again, have some type of. Dual panel systems going up, that, you know, continually going up like these. And those are gonna be maybe three feet above this, three feet above the surface, without knowing what's, without, you know, without, no, without knowing what's going on here, why Natick did that. A perfectly happened, just leaving well enough alone, is the fact is that mechanical constraints, and, you know. In good, in good practice will take care of itself anyway, I think this makes it more complicated, it needs to be. But good practice, this will never constrain any system, let's put it that way, from being built the way it needs to be built, and it'll, it'll never constrain it.
So then, basically, when you speak to Nana, can you find out the rationale for this?
I'll try to, the planner that worked on it is no longer there, but I will try to find out the rationale.
Or, or ask them if it's worked well, if, if they had to use it, you know.
So.
So now we're gonna go to the ground-mounted solar energy system.
Could I just make one comment about height?
Yes.
Uh, Artie had said earlier in our meeting. That, um. A solar, uh, solar panels, and I'm not talking about what's called roof-mounted, that are just, you know. Put or sew in, um, uh, above the roof, I'm talking about. Bill, essentially, building-mounted, um, the idea being that. If you're, if you're under the height of the. If you're under the total absolute height that's, we allow for the building, you could put that. Uh, up. Maybe you can, but I do want to be ver, make sure we're clear on something, I think Artie also referred to the fact that. Various, um, structures are allowed. Um, to exceed the height of the building. Um, provided that they don't exceed no more than twenty-five percent of the area of the building, et cetera. That's found in section four point seven point two, page one seventy. Height limitation exceptions in business apartment industrial, industrial districts. It specifies exactly what uh, are those exceptions, and it does not include solar panels. And it doesn't include any words that you could fit in, so, uh, well, solar panels fit in there. So I just want to know, if, you know, I just want to be clear that if we do want to allow so, so the panels, we'll have to. Say so.
Yeah, I, I, I would like.
Rely on this, it will not allow them.
I would, I would like to make sure we put something in here, so we can have a conversation. Now, and I'm talking about segmenting on, on, on different districts, the mixed use, or, 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 so one twenty-eight. To allow these solar lids, the visuals that we've been seeing, to allow that in the conversation. Again, I, I think that's, I think that's proactive, that's planning, that's, that's looking into the future, where things will. Probably will very well have something at some point, may, it may have that, we may very well, hey, ha. May have to have something like that, to meet our requirements going into the future. So I think we need to have something in there, to allow, maybe to start with the fifteen-foot, the allowance of mechanicals over the roof in those, in those areas. To allow that in those areas. And, I don't know if we have to talk about other areas at this point, because a lot of other areas are not, are not even at height anyway.
Well, I think the, I think those areas are all governed by different percentages of coverage on the roof, I'm, I, 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 from what I understand from you is you don't want to limit on coverage.
Well, well, yeah, but we're, but we've already decided that we're not limiting, we're, we're taking away that, matter of fact, the door, the door already takes away the. The, the percentage of the roof for solar, and already allows it the coverage, so we're already taking away that coverage. That, that.
I would, I think, Lee, to that point. We would need to modify that provision that Jean's talking about. Just to be, you know, to give clarity to the bylaw that says, except with a roof-mounted. Uh, you know, solar energy system.
Building, building mounted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, roof mounted as well, I'm sorry.
You know, uh, uh, you know, a roof-mounted. A roof-mounted system, Artie, I would, just to make an exception on that. I would say that a. Building-mounted system, which is different than a roof-mounted system, because it's higher up. I would probably suggest that that. System. A building-mounted system be. Set back probably two feet. From the perimeter of the building, as opposed to a, as opposed to a roof-mounted system, because it's much. It's much lowered to the roof, that profile can go right to the edge of the building. But if you've got something that's taller, it should be set back further, a little bit.
Um, I, that may or may not make, according to the designs, we've seen it, that doesn't make sense. The, the fact is actually on, on roof-mounted systems, on, on flat roofs, they are going to be, give or take four feet setback from the edge anyway. That's, that's basically from, from a safety standpoint. So that's from a safety standpoint.
That's not what we, that's not what we saw, for instance, from this other building. It has the building-mounted system at UMass.
Hmm, that, that, that's because it's not a roof mounted, that's a building-mounted system, there are differences, that's above the surface. The same, the same safety requirements needed for that, because that's above the surface, it's a completely different structure. You're not wa, you're not walking around the top of a roof, probably putting those solar panels on, that's completely different.
Really, so I guess what, I guess what I'm making a distinction on then is. Where there's, where it's mounted on a roof, it makes sense to be, allow it to go to the perimeter of the roof, I'm fine with that. And I'm fine with that in all districts. But where it's a. Where it's a roof-mounted system. Sorry, not a roof-mounted system, a building-mounted system, where instead of it being affixed to the roof. It can be three feet or six feet taller than the roof of the building.
Ten feet or twelve feet.
Or ten feet or twelve feet taller than the building, that should not be allowed right at the edge of the building, it should be set back a bit from the building.
Actually, actually, there's, there's a couple of reasons why you'd want it to allow it right to the edge of the building, from a structural standpoint, that's where the structure is. If you're pulling it back in, then you're cancel leaving, and you're adding, you're adding additional structure that probably. You, you already have to, you're already gonna have to have something in there anyway from the structure, but if you pull it back from the edge. You're gonna be adding additional structure, which is, which wouldn't be necessary. Plus, if it's above the, if it's above the roof.
Why?
If it's floating ten, if it's floating twelve or fifteen feet above the roof, pulling back two feet's not gonna make a. Yeah, hell, any difference.
I don't, so, I.
I wouldn't do that.
I don't totally understand it, it's almost ten o'clock. So why don't you and I get together before we meet next as a board, and try and figure that out? Because I, I think there is, there definitely is some kind of middle ground here. Uh, but we need to give some direction to Lee. So.
So, you know, I'm only advocating the mixed use in one twenty-eight. For the, for these types of structures right now. That's all I'm talking about right now.
So do we have to define them to make a distinction of what we're talking about, Lee?
Yes, we will, and we'll have to define the districts that they're gonna be allowed in.
Do we have to define the actual thing that's?
You have to define the rules you're going to apply to it.
The rule, yes, that's on my question, though, my question is the. Yeah, we do already have. We do already have definitions for building-mounted, which is different than a roof-mounted system.
Yeah, we have no definition, uh, in our proposed zoning for building-mounted.
Yeah, yeah.
We do, we do. It says, we do, it says an active solar energy system.
Oh, oh, excuse me. I was looking for the words building mounted, and it's a solar energy system building, there it is, okay.
So we do.
All right. And, but then, uh, we define, we define it, but then under the basic requirements, we don't allow it.
Well, I think I was treating it like it's an accessory structure on the roof, but. You're right, covered in that other provision.
Yeah, we have to, we just have to be careful of our wording, if we want to allow it as an accessory structure, we might have to be explicit about it, that's all.
And in, in the height requirements, we specifically say building-mounted, then we also, and we say specifically no greater than the height of the actual use. No height than, no, no greater than the highest point of the roof. I'm not sure how you can have a building mounted, no greater than the highest point, but, in any case, we have to, we have to define, we have to define some heights. We have to give a starting, we have to give a starting point of some heights, the starting point of where we, where we'd like these to be allowed. And then go from there.
Well, right, right now. We're allowing these. Roof-mounted systems. Uh, to be, you know, in one case, one foot above the height of the building. And then in, and then other roof-mounted. At three feet over the height of the building. And then to Jean's point. It says, you know, other building-mounted systems, which is separately, roof-mounted system. Is no greater than the highest point of the roof, that would prohibit what you're talking about.
Correct.
Oh, I think we can make an exception, you know, then we would say, Lee, except in. District A and District B, because that would probably be mixed use one twenty-eight. And, and the, uh. The, uh, Needham, uh, business, uh, industrial park. the uh Needham uh business uh industrial park um in Needham Crossing, I you know, you know, that can have a height of I don't know, six, you know, six feet.
No, 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 that 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 wouldn't, that wouldn't serve the purpose.
What is that?
I think, Adam, we should meet with Adam and try to work out these details. I I don't think we're gonna work them out tonight here. I think we should we should set up a a working meeting and work outside of this structure to come up with those details.
Okay, so.
Look at the setbacks, Adam. It looks like page five has setbacks and site plan review. Maybe we can do those and then wait for those heights for later.
So on the ground mounted solar energy system, we still have to deal with those heights?
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
So I my I'm only okay with a ten foot height if we have a screening requirement, even by rights.
Are you talking about solar parking canopies?
I'm talking, sorry, about small scale and medium scale ground mounted systems.
Right, okay.
I would up like a a standard fence is six feet. You can also get an eight foot fence. Uh and I would, and you can get a ten foot, that's that's possible, but I think that if we're gonna, if you're gonna allow it in your backyard in a residential district, a single family district. I think you we'd want to, we'd wanna screen a structure that large.
A- Adam, excuse me, isn't this what Lee said that we should vet outside of this meeting? Or is is it something else, Lee?
Yeah, I thought we should do the height outside of this meeting.
All of all.
All of these four heights, yeah.
Oh, I I don't know what you're talking about. I if if I have a comment on it, I'd if I have a comment on it, I better say it now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh they, what I'm concerned about is the maximum height for the solar parking canopy.
Right, I think we need a number.
Yeah, it 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 right. It's it can't be thirty-five feet.
Yeah, for the res- for the residential funding, yeah, I can't.
Right. Okay, um that's all, that's the only comment I had.
And I think the same thing is true for the commercial, the height. I think we need a height.
Well, rather than just saying subject, just site plan.
Yeah, I think commercials hovering around fourteen point nine. I think commercials hovering at fourteen point nine or fifteen feet, and that's gonna be dictated by fire by fire requirements, basically.
Right, you're you're talking about a parking canopy?
Yeah, for yeah, certainly our parking canopies, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
To to Natasha, to your point, Artie and I are gonna get together to talk about the height, this differences for a certain application. That's dealing with building mounted.
Natasha, do you wanna be part of that? Is this is this is architectural thing?
I mean, uh so I I'm I thought we were the building mounted, Lee was gonna review with, it was one foot above if there's a pitch. And if it's less than that, she was gonna review with Natick, right?
Yes, that was the roof, that was the roof mounted.
And then I thought we were talking about ground mounted.
No, 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 no. For clarity, we're talking about other, as it says in here, other building mounted. That's what Artie and I are gonna talk about. I think we should talk about the rest of height in these other categories and give that direction to to Lee.
I I thought what Lee said is that the ground mounted solar energy systems, the four different heights that are here, that that's what was gonna be vetted out of this me- outside of this meeting. Lee, am I wrong in that?
I don't, I don't unless, I don't feel like we have the the information to make a final decision. That's why I are you, are you, I mean, I don't know what the maximum height should be above i- in the residential structure. I think I wanna talk to an architect or somebody that's some experience of that before I come up with a number.
Right.
And the same thing is, I think is true for the non-residential. I mean, I think Artie has suggested fourteen to fifteen feet. Um I don't know if that's the right number or not. Um and I think.
Are you talking, so you're still talking about section one, building mounted solar energy systems?
I'm I'm talking about ground mounted.
Okay, ground mounted.
Ground mounted, we I had ten, I think I had ten feet for small scale and medium scale uh from grade. Um I don't know if people wanna drop that number or not. And then I I didn't, the height everybody felt was too high for a s- a solar park, for a basically a a canopy over p- over parking in a residential district. So we need to come up, what is the appropriate height for that? I don't know what the height is for that. Um I need some feedback on what people are constructing and what works. Um and then I then what should the height be for a commercial solar application over a parking lot? I need some information on what's actually being built, what's an appropriate standard for us.
Well, we know, we, Lee, we know what Boston Properties did, and we know the height of what Holland did. So I would, I would start there, because we have already allowed that, and we haven't.
Agree with that, Adam.
And then, and that's, you know, obviously for non-residential. For small, for small scale, I would, I think ten feet is too high. Um I would I would, I would say eight feet at the most. I don't know what screening is legally permissible. Lee, can you find out from Chris Heap? What screening is legally permissible? Medium scale is allowed by um by site plan review correctly?
Yes.
So I I would want, if we allowed it at a ten foot height, I would want, I would want some kind of screening anyways for a medium. But I want you to find out specifically from town council what's legally permissible.
Uh what, why is that a legal issue?
I I had a conversation with someone and they mentioned that it may not be legally permissible to screen a ground mounted, a small scale ground mounted system. I don't know, and that's why I'm asking Lee to look into it. Um for uh for a solar parking canopy in a residential district. Lee, you and I had this conversation yesterday, and you can have a scenario where, and I try to talk about it now, where you know, if a like my, the height of my garage, I think is like ten feet shorter than the height of the main house, even though it's attached. And it would be weird. And it would look out of character with the neighborhood if we allowed me to put a canopy over a garage that was ten feet you know, ten foot over that.
Well, this is.
I don't know why you would.
The solar, the solar par- parking canopy is something that's constructed on top of surface parking or paved surface. So it's happening on the ground. It's ground mounted.
This whole section is.
What about, so then what about a height for for a parking garage?
Well, that's building mounted.
Right.
So you don't need to see a need to make a distinction between in in our bylaw, is a is a parking garage a building?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So then, if I, so let's say it's not on a, let's say I don't, like in my other house, a ranch, I didn't have a garage, but I had a parking lot that went um all the way basically to the edge of the house. So if if that ranch, I don't know how tall a ranch is, twenty feet tall? Would it, like, I don't know that a canopy that could go up to thirty-five feet, but I guess you're saying allowed on the lot or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less.
I think we've all agreed that we need to come up with a a number that's lower than that, and we need to find out what that number is, and we just haven't figured out what that is yet. I think Artie's basically said fifteen feet, probably on the commercial side. I don't know what the what it should be on the residential side.
So doing this, my, excuse me, do we need, in thinking about this, do we need to think about fire access around the building? Is that, is that, is that a necessity? I mean, I mean, so if someone can have a garage five feet from the property line, but then 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 there technically there has to be ten feet between the garage and the house, that the purpose for that allowance is for to allow access of fire equipment. I think that's basically emergency equipment. That's why the the different, one of the differential differentiations as far as distance from structure accessory structure to the main structure is for that type of access. If we have a solar canopy, do we need to allow it to be tall enough for emergency equipment to go in? I'm not talking about massive fire, you know, massive fire truck. But do we allow it to be high enough to make sure that goes under, and that's all, for example, and that's all we have to allow? That's just a question.
Might be useful to ask that question of the fire chief, just so we're not surprised later.
Right.
Okay, I'll check with him.
So we've got setbacks and then site plan review, I
I I have a a quick comment on uh section three under setbacks. Um the last phrase where it says um trees, let's see. Uh the requirement for the planting of trees and landscape strips within the parking area, uh trees should be met elsewhere in the lot. The word should is not um a a a a word to use when you're requiring something. It it the word should be shall.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, then or must, you know, the concept is they must do it. So you 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 wanna say shall rather than should.
All other ground mounted systems. Why are we saying all other ground mounted systems?
Want they, aren't they systems that a person might simply want to have to generate solar power? That are not necessarily over their parking area, but just jump, they just want it.
It's for the small scale. It's for the small scale and the medium scale. I mean, because basically the solar parking parking canopies have the setbacks for accessory structures, which is why they're treated under paragraph two. And then paragraph four is dealing with all the other ground mounted systems. It's basically saying that for those systems, the setbacks are not are are the same setbacks as you have for the primary structure.
I think we should say that specifically.
Okay.
Primary structure.
Hmm, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Now, here, so I don't know how to deal with this. Oh, wait, it's a setback. So my house, I think, was, my house is from eight, built in eighteen eighty. And the living room, which precedes, obviously, predates the zoning bylaw. And the edge of my living room, I think, is like is certainly less than twelve feet from the property line. So if I wanted to put what I call that pole mounted system.
Twenty feet high.
Well, let, no, let's, I mean, to be fair, I think we're, I couldn't that system be as, I guess it's ground mounted, so the tallest would would like ten feet so far. So let's say ten feet. Uh that would be a little too close. My neigh- you know, my neighbor.
I I think, I think, now, for example, so your land, is your house is non-conforming. So I I are we, are we saying then that the any ground mounted system should meet the the conforming setbacks of of a principal structure on the lot, something to that effect?
Yes, uh yes, that's what this is intended to say.
So that's what it's intended to say. It's not intended to say it could sit, it could fit that where your house is, Adam, it has to fit the actual conforming setbacks of that lot.
So let's use a scenario, though, where, a good point, Artie, and I appreciate the clarification. So do we need to specifically call that out, Lee?
No. I mean, it it's, it's, you're you're introducing it as, it it you can't put it there because it's not, it would be not, it wouldn't meet the dimensional standard. Wherever you place it, it has to, it has to be in a rear yard, or it has to be in the rear yard or the side yard, and it has to meet the setback standard, or you can't do it. Or, and then if we have the special permit for the front yard, and you can meet the dimensional standard there, you could get back. Um but on a roof mounted system, you're protected as a as an as a non-conforming structure, you're entitled to put it on your roof. It's not a problem.
And I guess why uh I don't have a preference one way or the other, just wanna understand, why are we setting stricter setback standards for other kinds of ground mounted solar as compared with the solar parking canopies? Solar parking canopies, they can use the, they can be the same as the accessory structures, but all others have to be the same as the primary structure.
I was treating, I was treating it that way, because I kind of thought I viewed it, I viewed them as the canopies almost like as the garage that we treat as an accessory structure. So I was just kind of giving it the same protection that uh a garage would have and treating it the same way as a garage.
Okay, but that's a reasonable point, a reasonable explanation, okay.
Yeah, plus visually has a much, much less of an impact, or could have much less an impact, because it's, it's solar canopies themselves are, they're pitched at five degrees somewhere, seven degrees. They're they're not, they're usually not a really big pitch. And they're, they had, they don't have walls to them, so they're up there, not a big pitch, so it's much less visi- visual volume than a round out the system.
Okay. Okay, I'll say, thanks.
And Lee, remind me, what's the setback for mechanicals?
On the, on the roof?
Yes.
Uh it's fifty feet from the center line of the nearby road, kind of odd.
For the mechanicals?
Yeah, that's what it says. Um
Yeah, you.
Shall be at every point fifty feet from the center line of any street. Reading from section four point seven point two on the height exceptions for mechanicals.
You're talking mechanicals, roof roof or mechanicals on the ground?
Mechanicals on on the roof. Oh, yeah, that's that's the criticals on the roof. I'm sorry. Uh um if you're talking about mechanicals on the ground, I don't know.
Um I don't know if they, if they don't meet the definition of structure.
Like an air conditioner kind of box thing that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I I think if it doesn't meet, if if it's not defined as a structure, then it wouldn't have a setback.
So I could put a, I can put a generator that's uh three or four feet wide by ten feet long. That's a little big, um right at my neighbor's property line.
I'm just reading it's.
Five feet from the.
Well, public utility, Paul.
That is sometimes.
Well, anything constructed or erected as a structure, is anything that there's an exception, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground or attached to something located on the ground. Um so includes a pool, um but excludes a fence, a boundary wall, a retaining wall, a public utility pole, a public utility supporting device, or a structure with less than one hundred ground squ- one hundred uh square, one hundred square foot ground coverage and a height of less than eight feet.
Well, that excludes uh that would exclude a generator, and it would exclude a um what Jean was talking about, a condenser. So what about on the height? What's, so you've confirmed that what Jean said? The setback for mechanicals on the height of a commercial building.
Well, it's varying, that 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 requirement, I think, Jean, you, I think you read the one section of it, varies, I think, from district to district.
Yeah, there may be specific requirements in other districts.
In different, in different districts, but I think it's.
A general one.
The general one, I think the Jean read was um, I think it was fifteen fifteen foot height, and I thought it could cover thirty-three percent of the building, but I, of the roof area, but I.
Twenty-five percent of the area.
Or it didn't have, yes, of the of the of the surface area of the roof. But does it say what the setback is?
Yes, it just says fifty feet from the center line of any street.
Thank you, so.
But it doesn't have any height, so this is just a general thing about and as Lee said, there's probably specific provisions in other sections.
So I think what I would like to see here in the setback section is to add a notwithstanding clause that says, notwithstanding the setbacks for mechanicals in any. The setbacks for mechanicals in any district, uh. Roof mounted mechanicals in any district. Uh, roof mounted. And building mounted systems. Shall, this, uh, you know, shall have the setback of the building. And then Artie and I have to squabble about, you know, the height of a. You know, like I was talking about, if you wanna set back a little bit beyond the building, for a taller building mounted system.
Yeah, I don't, I love to talk about, I, I don't understand why we need that, but I don't understand your thought process there, I, I don't know why we need that.
Because then otherwise, we'd, otherwise, wouldn't. Otherwise, we can't define these things as mechanical systems, cuz other, people are gonna think that a solar. Uh, you know, a solar energy system is a form of a mechanical, it is, a mechanical device. And Jean just said, that a mechanic, that mechanicals can't. You know, have, have the fifty foot setback from the, from the middle of a road.
Adam, this is not a mechanical system, this is an electrical system.
Electronic, this is an electrical system, electronic system, yeah, technically, technically, that's what it is, and it could, it could be.
How is that, how is an electrical system not a mechanical system?
Mechanical is for HVAC, electrical is for solar and electrical, you know.
It has no moving parts, has no moving parts.
Uh, mechanical systems usually are, are units that are on roofs, and electrical systems are not, except for solar, right? Uh, uh, you typically don't put electrical systems on your roof.
So. You have electrical systems on the roof to cut power to HVAC systems. You have shut offs and electrical and those sub panels.
That's all inside building, or in, in, in underground, or in other areas, you don't have electrical. Systems on roofs, you have mechanical systems on roofs.
I was just on a commercial roof.
If you do that, then you do, then you do a penthouse, it's a mechanical penthouse, but they're mechanical, it's the. The, the, this is very specific to solar, which is electrical, electrical is usually underground, or it's, it's, if it's above ground. You know, i- if, if you have transformers and things, they're usually on, you don't put them on the roof typically.
I understand you don't put a transformer on the roof.
Um, generators or things like.
Adam, irrespective of that, the provisions that Jean just was referring to, does not refer, does not even refer to solar. It refers to tire, to to- towers, fires, domes, chimneys, ventilators, skylights, bulkheads. It doesn't, it's not, this fifty four rule, it's not even, it's not applied to this at all.
The only reason I cited it was to say, watch out, if you think you're gonna rely on something general like this. Cuz it doesn't even mention solar, however, Lee, you said, you really have to look at the height provision for every district. So for example, mixed use one twenty eight, um, section four point nine, it's, it allows solar. Um, panels, um, and has limits on them and so forth. So we, we really have to go through our bylaw and be very careful to see what we already have.
For setback and height.
Yeah, it's got all that, uh, um.
In those, and so we may have, so that's how we have the foundation of where we'll make the changes, Artie's talking.
May exceed the maximum building height, provided no part of such structure shall project more than fifteen feet above the maximum allowable building height. And you can't exceed twenty five percent of the horizontal coverage of the roof. And it does specify solar or, or photob, uh, photog. So that's just an example of one of our districts, where, you know, we have to be careful and look at every one of them.
Jean, what was that page?
Uh, that one was page one seventy five, and that was the dimensional regulations for mixed use one twenty eight, one of the more recent. Um, zoning, uh, areas we, we created.
Thank you. Okay, um, we're almost done. Just the site plan review, which I think just affirms when we apply site plan review. And. I may wanna add here, some, you know, a setting for screening for medium. Potentially for small scale.
Doing site plan review on, on, on small scale, so one, wouldn't happen there, but we can add it for medium.
Okay. We have other items on the agenda, um. But it's, it's very late, the, the minutes. So Lee, do you have enough to, to get to the next stage and then?
Yes, I think, I think with a, with a meeting off, of, of a couple of us, we can get to the next stage.
Okay, so then, Artie, you and I will hook up.
Yeah, but let, let me just confirm, Natasha, would you like to be part of this conversation related to the building mounting systems? You know, architecturally, what height, the height we're talking about. Would, would you wanna be part of the conversation, because that's what we're talking, we're talking about those visuals that were being presented, those solar lids, solar canopies.
I'd like to be part of the conversation if I'm available, but I don't wanna hold up. Like, si- check out what days work for you, and, and if I can make it, I would like to make it, but if I can't, I would still go ahead. And I'll just say that if three of you meet, this is a notice meeting.
Oh, that's right.
And why don't you and Adam? Go through it, and then I can, I can touch base with you.
Artie, maybe we'll grab a lunch or something this week or next. And then, but, yeah. And then we'll get information, direction back to, to Lee. And then we'll move forward from there, I just wanna make sure that we stay on track. I, um. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of, um, September five as amended by Jean?
Oh gosh, wait a minute, I didn't. Not gonna bother with that, I think, yeah, wait a minute, I think that, I didn't have any questions. That's right, so you can say that, yes.
I'll be back in a minute.
I seconded that motion.
So we have a motion, I guess by me, uh, seconded by Jean, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, uh, uh, Artie Crocker. Natasha Spata.
Sorry, I.
Jean McKnight.
I.
The chair votes aye, uh, we have accepted the minutes of, uh, September five as amended. Lee, do you have, um. A report that's gonna take more than literally fifteen seconds?
No, I, I have, I, I can report at the next meeting, I'm fine.
Okay, uh, we received correspondence in our packet, um. Um, from resident Ross Donald by email dated November twenty second. Regarding the framework for a discussion for, uh, rezoning the Needham Housing Authority Linden Chambers project. Um, I've gone back and forth with Ross to, you know, answer some of those questions and to provide some information. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
May, may you, may, may I know what you, uh, told Ross that, um, I think he was afraid that these. Rules that the housing authority has would apply to this joint meeting, in general, what is the advice?
So I, I explained. Tim, we don't have a published document of the planning board. I said that there are some, some of those that specifically that we do. Um, you know, we do try to adhere to these ground rules. You know, to be able to speak to as many, or hear from as many people as possible. And, uh, we generally do have a limit of, you know, of three minutes. Um, and, you know, if he wanted to talk about multiple different subjects, he, you know, he could do that, he could speak about. Height for three minutes, and then if he wanted to come back and speak for, if, if, if someone else wanted to speak, then he could come back after them. And speak about density for another three minutes or. Um, I also mentioned, he talked about financing and some other items. And I said those items are not part of the zoning, we're really focusing the subject of this. Meeting with NH, with the Needham Housing Authority, on the, on the zoning, the framework. And on questions about the, you know, the project as they've designed it so far, so. You know, I was as specific as I could be, and I said that we'll lay out the ground rules at our, you know, at our meeting.
Yeah, all right, I just want to know if, uh, we had any expectation that we had to coordinate the housing authority and. Work out their rules and so forth, but apparently, we're, we're not gonna do that.
I'll, I'll speak to Reg, and then, you know, and we'll follow probably the.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, yeah. Got all kinds of strict rules, like you have to sign up ahead of time and everything.
I, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Natasha Spata.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, we have adjourned, thank you all, good night.
We'll, we'll talk, we'll talk soon.